Hi, everybody. Seeing that it's 6:00, I'm going to call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order. And I am going to start really quickly with a few meeting rules, just there's so many of us. So I want to make sure we give everybody an opportunity to speak and to be heard. Just a couple of things to know about this room. The acoustics are not fantastic. And we have this blower that is really loud. So I'm going to need everybody to speak up. I might sound a little like I'm yelling. It's partially for the benefit of the folks online. Also, if you're under the blower, I'm probably not as loud as if you're right here. And I'd ask everybody to state their name first and last for the record each time you speak. I'm going to try to give everybody, we'd like to contain it to about three minutes per set of remarks, just to give everyone one time to speak. And then if we have a second set of remarks from the same person, we'll come back to you after everyone else has spoken. That will kind of help make it fair. I am Kate Plumley Stewart. I'm the chair of the board. I'm going to go around, we don't have our names tags. Tracy?
Tracy Young.
John Klug.
Alice Kennedy.
Derek Russell.
Great. And so, and if you can't hear, if you just give us a quick signal. The folks online are asked to please stay on mute until you're called on. Yes, thank you, Alisa. And just as a reminder, please limit yourself. Don't have side conversations because you may think you're really quiet, but because of the acoustics of the room, it's really challenging for everybody to hear. It also makes it so our minute taker can't necessarily hear when she goes to do the minutes. So I super appreciate it. I'm excited that you guys are all here because this is really how town government works. With that, and the meeting rules established, I am going to entertain a motion to go into the public hearing. It is a public hearing to discuss and accept comment on the draft short-term rental ordinance. A copy of the draft ordinance is posted in the town offices and online. And you can go, our website is enfield.nh.us if you need a copy. And I think we have a few copies that are bouncing around here as well. Who would like to make that motion?
So move me.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. We're now in the public hearing, so more fun and rules. So public hearings are different than regular board. It's an opportunity for us to hear from the public, which is fantastic. So we're going to stick to the meeting rules. And what happens is you guys all get to comment. We'll, I'll call on you. I'm going to start with the folks here present, and then I will move to people online. So I'm always going to kind of go in that order. We'll do present, and then we'll move to online. And then I'll ask for final call. I think it's important to be respectful to your neighbors. I know a lot of people have pretty strong feelings one or another. So if we can contain our personal feelings, right? I think they're valid, but I want to make sure that we're polite and respectful to everyone else. Tonight is an opportunity to learn. And we are not making a decision tonight. We're taking your input so we can incorporate it into the work that we are doing. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ed, our town manager.
I don't have a lot, just a brief history. This ordinance started its conception prior to my arrival here. The last town manager, Ryan Ailsworth, and Rob Taylor were working on this in light of some of the problems that other towns have had around the state. I know around the Lakes region, they were having lots of issues with short-term rental ordinances. A lot of the residents were getting upset when it was happening in their neighborhoods. So a lot of things were happening. So they started writing this ordinance when I came on. It jumped on my plate pretty quickly. I pushed it off for a while, but then me and Rob kind of batted it back and forth, trying to come up with something that was, I would say, well-balanced, that it allowed short-term rentals, didn't put a lot of restrictive rules on them. But there was, there was some, I guess, some, some form of a registry so we knew what was going on. So we, we really batted it back and forth before we brought this to the select board last year. The select board discussed it briefly, passed it to the planning board. The planning board talked about it for a little while. And now it's back in front of the select board. What our, what our thoughts are right now is that we'll continue working and drafting this ordinance till we find we have something that we think we want to, want to move forward or not. But if we decide to move it forward, talking with the town attorney, it looks like it may need to move to a town meeting vote. It will probably won't be a select board decision, but it really determines what the final outcome of the ordinance is before we make that final decision. So we'll be working on that. And we just thank everybody for coming. This is what we were hoping for, that we could get a lot of feedback of what people's feelings are so we can move in a direction as we put some more work into this.
Did you guys stand? It says room capacity of 80. We're not there. The fire access is there. Right? All right, so I'd like to circle back and just talk to the board because I'm sure you've gotten some feedback. Is there anything you want to address before we go into the public comments? All right. Who wants to be first in the room? You're going to raise your hand up. Look, our first, and you're going to state your name nice and loud so our meditator can...
My name's Jeffrey White.
Thank you.
Jeffrey White, I'm at Lake Place, Enfield. I think this is a good idea. This is what I've read online. My wife and I looked it over, and it's really a set of guidelines. I know there's a fee and whatnot, and inspection could be, could happen. But it's a good idea. And for people that are renting, it gives them information of what they can do. Can I bring my pack of dogs with me? So that type of thing. I've had some personal experience with it locally, in my neck of the woods. But other than that, thank you. Thanks for hearing me.
Go ahead.
Richard Day. I live on Enfield Lake. Escalade Lake. I just would like to know, what is the predicate for this?
So I can, I can bring that up. Like I said, it started with a lot of problems that people have had around the state with overcrowding of houses, failed septic systems because of overcrowding of houses. You know, a lot of noise and different things in the, in the areas. We've had a few of those problems here. We haven't had a lot of them. We have had some calls from concerned neighbors that, you know, someone just bought the house right next door to me for the sole purpose of it being a rental. And I'm concerned at this point. So that's really when we brought it up last year. I got three or four calls that houses had just sold, and the people that bought them had no intention of occupying them, that it was solely for rental purposes. And so we just brought it back forward. And like I said, we've been really trying to balance the, the use of your own land versus protecting the neighbors. And so we're trying to build an ordinance to support that.
Go ahead. Your, your own life.
I'm Elaine Day. Also, I'm Escalade Lake. And that is my concern, is that it seems to be there are properties that are bought just for the purpose of rental. And then they're, like, we have done an Airbnb one weekend a year. That's it. And that's what I envisioned Airbnb to initially be. People who had a home and could occasionally rent it. But I'm wondering if there's one, some way to distinguish between the people that are working, say, more than 30 days a year. Those are the people that are making this a business. And I think that could be regulated. And I'm not crazy about having the rest of it regulated, so.
Go ahead.
Tina Sterns, One Star Drive. My question is, who's going to police this? Is it going to be on the honor system, the people that are running businesses of Airbnbs? We're expecting that they're going to come forward and comply with all the regulations? And, or is it going to be neighbors that say, hey, I know, you know, there's people in our neighborhood that are doing this? And then who's going to go out and follow up on it?
It'll be some of both, like every ordinance that we have is, you know, I think most people will do what they're supposed to do and follow the ordinance. The ones that don't, neighbors will complain if there's a problem. And if not, if the police get called or someone gets called out there, then we'll notify that. But that's really how every ordinance works. We're not out there, I mean, if we can see it, then we'll address it. But if it's something we can't see, we don't know until there's a problem.
Buck is in Star Drive. I wrote down a few things, and I've sent a couple of you some emails. But I think the first and foremost, it should be the safety issue. It should be fire extinguishers. It should be, you know, nothing in the basement where people can have ingress and egress. Those types of things are really important. Also, it rolls into the number, I guess, the parking and excessive noise. I think those are the things that a lot of people have a lot of problems with. Cars parking on roads, our roads aren't, especially the private roads, they're not the biggest things in the world. I mean, you get a couple of cars on that road, you can't get through. It happens during winter sometimes, and, you know, screws up plowing and all those types of things. I really think that what we have to do is we have to look also, an important thing that Glenn will tell, tell you about sometime, like he always tells me, is about polluting the lake. You know, I, you're, you're talking about having a lot of people in a location. I mean, sometimes there's, there's more people than there are bedrooms. Sometimes there's much more. You know, the septic systems weren't built for having 15, 20 people in a place. Now, that isn't everybody. Some people are respectful. Some people only have a limited number on the basis of bedrooms. But we should remember that. And you've all seen the balloons that have come out. You've all seen water washing away septic systems. In fact, the water soaks into the ground right now, and it drains out in the, in the septic system. So not all of it is, is going down like it's supposed to. Some of it's draining out, running in streams, under, you know, underground into the lake, causing problems. The last thing I would say is that, and this goes to the board. I think it's a board decision. I don't think this should be put out to the public at large because the public at large, a lot of times, isn't affected. The people that are the most affected are the people that have these short-term rental properties around the lake. And they should be respected. I'm a property rights person. I think, you know, when you buy a piece of property, you have the right to. But you also have to be respectful, and you have to take care of your neighbors. And if you don't, shame on you. Maybe there's things we can do in here to get the, to get the attention. Having this, having somebody within 30 minutes sort of avoids people coming from out of state buying the place, or they'll have to get a management association to take care of it. That isn't all of that idea. But putting it out to the town, yeah, I don't think is a good idea because the town people, you know, they vote for these guys up here. And I think these guys up here ought to make the decision. And I think having that decision made before next year and having the things implemented would be a really good advantage to everybody that has a place along the lake. So that's my two cents.
Bob LaCroy, Seven Donny, you can ask one more thing. I can see things in here that do make some sense. You know, one of the things, you just mentioned, somebody buys a camp, they rent it to somebody, and that's what they bought it for. They bought it to rent. You're not going to stop that. That's not short-term rental. I mean, there's places all over town that people have bought just to rent. I own some of them. I didn't buy them to live there, I rent them. That's one thing. What's defined short-term? Three months? Six months? Two weeks?
Legally, it's less than 30 days.
Less than 30 days is defined as short-term.
Yes.
Okay. So what you're saying is if you've got to be, if you're signed up with a B and B, which I don't have any, but I know that those B and B rules are pretty strict because they want you back there the next year, the next year, and the next year. So you're saying that somebody that wants to rent for two weeks, this is going to change that. Minimum 30 days. That's the way it's written. No?
No, it's, it's really just a registry to make sure that they're doing things safe and they're not overcrowding those. Because rental, it doesn't say they can't rent.
Well, most of your B and Bs target how many people are going to be in the place, not just, I mean, people. I understand that. So if B and B says you've got three bedrooms, you can have six people plus two ones. Wherever written, if 16 people show up, they're not the ones, somebody's going to, you know, going to enforce that. That's going to be tough. That's going to be tough when you start driving and say it's going to be cleaned out. You guys are gone, they just drove 30 hours to get there or whatever. So I just, some of the stuff in here is needed. Some of it, I think, is going beyond it. Rinsing, it's rinsing a lane one week or whatever they do out of the year. They got to register with the town and, you know, commit to what they're doing. I don't know how many people stay there, but I just think some of it's a little, a little out too far.
Okay, behind you, Harry, and then I'll do your worries. Go ahead.
Me?
Yep, yep. You were first. I'm trying.
I'm Huey Marie. I live at 96th and 4A in Enfield. So I wanted to just speak to some of the things that are in the ordinance. And one is, I was wondering, you talked about other towns having problems. So I was wondering what the research was, or the survey, or have we gotten increased complaints here that have caused us to have them? The other is to help preserve the quality and quantity of the housing stock for use round residential use. I don't understand that. So if you could explain that, that'd be great. And the safety issues, some of us, not all of us, but I do do mine through Airbnb. There's a million things that I have to do. I pay them a fee, and I pay my taxes in New Hampshire. So I don't know if that's one thing you could look at. Meaning, if I'm doing it that way, I could just show you that I've listed for them and every safety concern that I, you know. So those are my questions. And then a couple of things that I, I hear, and I understand about the parking. We have a parking ordinance already. It's, it, one of the things I read today was, you know, everybody's fire should be pushing to the left, right? So we already have that. Are we using that before we go into something like this? We already have a noise ordinance. Are we using that before we do something like this? And then ultimately, I think if any of us were disrespecting each other or causing that type of problem, we're a small enough community that no one would want that to happen. And we realize we only have two or three policemen to. And I think we have bigger issues and problems for them to be taken care of. So I think it was, those are my questions. I can repeat those if you want, but...
I can, I can do some. I know, you know, some of the issues were in, like I said, the Lakes region, Conway, some of those places that, you know, they were having houses that were becoming party houses. The same house would get rented every weekend by big groups of, I'm going to say college kids. They probably weren't all college kids. But it was, it was becoming a, a big problem to the point that some of those communities tried to ban short-term rentals completely. That's not something we're trying to do. I want to make sure that that's clear.
But have the, have complaints like that?
Complaints have been increasing since I've started. We got three or four last year, and I've gotten quite a few more this year that, you know, the neighbors, this is happening. People are starting to race up and down the roadways. They're parking in ways that are blocking the roadways. When they're on private drives, our police have no enforcement over parking, so the parking ordinances don't apply. Something like this would, that they would have to have ample parking on their property for the amount of people that they're inviting to come to their home.
I would hope, I would just hope that before we take this bigger step, that one, we use the ordinances that we have already. And two, that we're not using other towns for what could or could not be happening in our town. And I'd like to see more information. Is it three people? Is it 10 problems? Are septic tanks going over? I think that's fair to know a little bit more about the problems that we have.
Yeah, I think we're well beyond your three minutes. Thank you. But I will say that we have, I understand, and that's, we just have so many people. But I do want to, this, while it did start looking at it with some foresight, we have had conversations and we have had complaints. I can tell you, I personally picked some people out of the road and helped them home. So it's not, you know, it's not like, we, I think some of us have seen different pieces. We've gotten different feedback. Not everything in this town results in a police call, right? Because we can be good neighbors and we can help people, like find their way home, maybe tell them they can't drink beer on the side of the road. So, you know, there are things we can do to help each other. But I think we're not going to pull all that data here tonight. But we are going to listen to what you're saying and pull together like the key points and, and look at them. I'm going to go to, Harry was next, then I believe you, and then Brian.
Okay, Harrison Trumbull, 33 Rayner Road. I like this ordinance. I think it's a good compromise, a good starting place between what short-term rental started out as. Somebody renting their home for a couple of nights, maybe they lived there, they had somebody come in. And now it's morphed into faceless corporation investors, far away, no connection to their neighbors. They couldn't care less. We've experienced this when people rent an Airbnb, they're here to vacation. And young people are here to party, and they invite their friends. And I think it's very important to get ahead of the curve before we start having problems. Let's tell these investors, look, if I have a two-bedroom house, you can put six people in. And it gives a clear set of instructions so everybody's on the same page. Plus, I really like the idea of a contact person available 24/7 within 30 minutes. So we get a, the police get a complaint, they call a contact person, say your tenants are too loud. You get over there and straighten this out. Doesn't necessarily even require a police response. We rented a house once, and a water heater didn't work. Tried the three emergency numbers, two of them were disconnected, and the other one didn't answer. So I finally was able to cobble together and make it run through the week by constantly resetting it. But I think it would help the tenants to know that there's somebody within 30 minutes that's designated to come and, and work on this. So I think it's an excellent ordinance, strikes a good middle ground. People can still rent in a reasonable way, protects the town and the town's property values, reduces absentee ownership. I think you've done a good job. And one suggestion I have is that the town, we proved on the one thing that says the stuff that's going to be posted in the house, that the town would prepare an easy-to-read poster that we cite the basic codes like fireworks. Not that the whole code would be in there, but, you know, no fireworks at the 10 o'clock. Fireworks only on these days. Something easy for people to understand so they know what the rules are when they move in. And that would save a lot of misunderstanding, I think. So I think you're doing a good job myself.
Carol Chester, 337 on 4A. There are a few things that I, I'd like to say, and I agree with the days. You've got at least two, possibly three different levels of people who are renting. People who rent one weekend a year or a week or two a year. Maybe they go on vacation, and to help pay for that, they're renting their place out. Or somebody that rents it out to be able to cover their insurance and their taxes. And then you've got the level of the absentee corporate whatever, or somebody who's just invested in a rental, and that's a business. Those are two different things. And I don't think they should be treated the same way. There needs to be a definition of, you know, what is this business versus, I'm trying to keep a roof over my head by renting out a little bit so that it helps my income, especially those of us who are on, you know, just a social security or a fixed income of some sort. You know, we need that help. And if you're looking to keep the character and the worker's housing, it's the people who are buying up to be rentals that are having the issues that are causing problems. Number one. Number two, the issue of having somebody within 30 minutes goes along the same lines. If you're somebody who's working a business at it, yes, have somebody close by. But if I wanted to rent my home while I'm away on vacation for two weeks, I would ask my kids who live on the seacoast to be a contact. But they know that, you know, if I have a plumbing issue, call Martin's Mechanical, right here in town. If I have an electrical issue, call Defiance. You know, my providers are here in town. Cell phones are wonderful. People can call and they can direct whatever from where they're at. I don't need to have somebody 30 minutes away. Even if I had a kid that lived over in Stafford, Stafford, Vermont, or Norwich, they wouldn't get to my house in 30 minutes. That's, that's just a little too, too close. A couple of other things in here that bothered me were no trash containers outside. My trash and recycling are outside my garage all the time. Why would I have to find some way to move them inside because I'm going to rent my house out for a week? That just doesn't strike me as, I understand you don't want trash everywhere. But if my normal trash receptacles are outside my garage, why do I have to find another place for them? And lastly, the, the issue of making the dwelling unit available for inspection upon request. I'm not going to have somebody show up to my house at any point in time and say, okay, I want to inspect. First of all, I have PTSD. And I, if I don't have a plan that somebody's showing up, somebody shows up at my house unexpectedly, I have a panic attack. So that's just, you know, make an appointment. You know, if there's a big issue, I'm not going to be able to hide it before somebody comes to inspect. Make the appointment, have an initial inspection, I can get that. But beyond that, I don't want somebody just showing up whenever just because they feel like they need to inspect. That's just not right.
And Brian, was that?
I'm starting with knock-knock, Joe. Knock-knock. Do you want the warrant? Yeah, nice. Brian Deggan, hi. You know, first of all, when I'm reading this, I was like, what is the problem we're trying to solve here? So I looked at Airbnb, and there's 17 rentals right now. Two of them are an Airbnb, Ben Breakfast. I think that's right there. And, and the other, and the other ones are kind of here and there. But as somebody who has been in front of Dartmouth students, and they're sort of this kind of horrible subset of people, I totally get, no, no, no.
We don't say, we don't say bad things, no matter how we feel.
You have a million-dollar home, another person a million-dollar home, and somewhere in the million-dollar home, and they get these little arguments. I found them to be difficult. So I understand what you're saying. One of the things that was good on this, that I, that should happen, is actually, one of the troubles I have is we have the septic's along the lake, and they're ready for four people, and you put like five in there. The thing about that is if you look very careful, this happens a lot. I don't really like any of the rest of this, mostly because a lot of this is already there. But one of the things, as a guy who spends a lot of time looking at math, is if you do go forward, there's two things. One, I don't think it's the selectmen's decision to approve and deny units. I think the town should vote on it, and then the building inspector or somebody should, should assign it. This is definitely a town decision. Another thing in there is, if you're going to have like a $50 fee, I want to make sure the fee covers the actual cost of this because in here it says like, co-inspector property and write a report. That stuff allows the work. I don't, the fee structure is, but I think $250 should probably cover that. I think all these fees here are way too low for the actual cost. The other thing about that, as you see, I read a lot of academic papers, so it's right. A lot of this also comes down, for me, to the fact that, again, I just don't think it's a problem. People are worried. Sure, the grievous things in here are like saying that this takes away from like rentals. I mean, I'm a guy who owns a lot of businesses. Every single property I own is, is a company because of a lot of lawyers. So it's really hard to go through all the properties I rented and be like, mm, that's a bad investor or something. You know, it's really hard to pick and choose. And I don't think there's an easy answer. But until we actually have defined a problem, I don't know if it's worth the time to go through all of this. I mean, you say there are more calls, it's more calls like three, five, 10 calls a year is probably not really worth all the extra infrastructure required to implement this. And if, if you think it's otherwise, I'd love you. Yeah, that's all you have.
Go ahead.
Hi, Dan Regan, Lock Haven Road. Brian, I respectfully disagree. I think it is a problem. It's becoming more of a problem. It's especially a problem for people that live right beside the problem. So while somebody on the other side of town may not have the deal, they get right next to it, do, and they drive, handle it themselves, but oftentimes they can't. So I believe people have the right to do what they want in property until it affects them. I think this goes a long way addressing that. And I applaud it. I do agree the numbers in here should be much higher. The $50 may be great to register, but then some of these people are renting places for like $1,000 a day. You have a $150 fine. That's not going to help.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Carrie Curry. I live on Crystal Lake Road. I, I have a lock cabin, and it's been in the Curryer family since 1947. I I have a lock cabin and it's been in the Curryer family since nineteen forty-seven. And I rent that to supplement the property taxes on it. I have four rentals a year, four people that will rent. I I abide by the criteria that you're mentioning here out of my own contract. I think our problem is that we have the investment, investors versus personal property owners. That's where you have to differentiate it because if I have to follow, now you figure I got a nineteen forty-seven cabin, a lock cabin, if I have to follow your criteria of egress windows and with all the other specific things, that's going to be a financial hardship for me to update the cottage. Therefore, the property taxes, you know, I rent it to supplement the property taxes. I'm proposing maybe have a waiver on certain properties. And or if you adopt this, have an appeal process, just like you do with property taxes. And you have so many days that you can appeal your decision. Also, I think state code six seventy-four dash nineteen, I can, I could do non-conforming use. And perhaps because of the ordinance you pass is a hardship to me and then my property would be grandfathered. So I'd like you to consider exemption for a waiver or grandfathering some of these properties that are personal owned for years. The purpose has not changed from the Curryer family that's been passed on to me. And it might change with this ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, he was right behind you, but we'll let you both, one go and then the other.
Brian, Bob, Star Drive. I don't know if anybody was on Crystal Lake yesterday around two-thirty, three o'clock. We were with our family. There was a boat coming from, this is just an eye-opener, there was a boat coming from the boat launch across the lake and it was a fishing boat and there was about two inches of gunwale showing on the side we were looking at because it had fourteen people in it. It went to a dock that we know is an Airbnb on that lake and twelve people got off. The boat went back to the boat launch, two people. It's just, I couldn't care less what anybody does with their property person. I really couldn't care less until something happens and it affects the lake where my grandchildren can't swim in it. That's my complaint.
David Frack, live on Lock Haven Road, and I am speaking for myself. I am not speaking as your newly-elected state rep, nor am I speaking as a member of the election. I do believe that in the case of properties where the owner's last name is LLC, that we should treat that as a commercial endeavor. And to do that, I think it's very appropriate that the town, whether it's the select board or the planning board, have some sort of a publicly notice hearing. Similar to what you, to what the planning board would do or a site plan or a commercial operation. And that might do a couple of things. One, it puts the neighbors on notice that something might happen. Two, it gives the neighbors an opportunity to say, hey, John and his wife have lived here for the last twenty years. And when it's just the two of them, everything is fine. When they invite their aunt and uncle and four other kids and they're there for two weeks, we're starting to smell stuff. The septic system can't handle it. So I think you could learn a lot by having a public hearing, getting input from the neighbors because a property owner that has bought property as an investment probably hasn't done a whole lot of due diligence into what, you know, what is the septic system going to do? How many people can it support? Is there really parking available for X number of cars? So I think that's important. The second thing I would like to agree with a couple of people who said the fees are way too low. People or companies, corporations that are buying up these properties as investments are charging two, three, four thousand dollars a week. So your registration fee, that's not a hundred dollar, a two hundred and fifty dollar fine cost of doing business. It's not going to fix anything. So I'd like you guys to take that, my thoughts into account. I have some other basically housekeeping things that I leave with you guys to look at, it's portage and that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Bye, Lindsey.
Lindsey Smith, with Shaker Hill Bed and Breakfast. We're one of the two freaks, maybe Bed and Breakfast in the town. When my parents moved here in ninety-eight to open a Bed and Breakfast, they had to go through a lot of work. They had to get approvals, they had to get business licensing, they had to do a lot of different things in order to open up a business. And to keep that business, every year get their water tested, every year renew a business license or every two years, keep a New Hampshire meals and tax license, all of that. Airbnb comes along and I'm sorry, they don't have a lot of regulations. They might, you might sign a lot of stuff on, but nobody from Airbnb is coming and checking your property. Airbnb is is governed by by public comments, basically. So as people rate you, if you're there, you know, the type of property and all of that kind of stuff, if you're a super host or a good host, and you can do back the same to folks that rent, but there is no one from Airbnb that is coming. And how do I know this? We closed in the pandemic because we had to. And so temporarily, yes, we are on Airbnb. We'll be going back, but that was a stopgap. My mom's not sure if she wants to retire. So we've been doing it for the last two years. Nobody's coming. They don't care if we put eight people in a room that our septic system can't handle. Or we make a downstairs basement into, you know, something with six bunk beds. And I'm someone who travels pretty much exclusively with Airbnb or Herbo, because that works in the hotel world and I don't have a gig bar. So this makes sense. There's a few things in here, you know, that don't, and I do agree, if you're only doing it one weekend a year, maybe that's something else. But if you are having a safety issue, the moment there's a fire for whatever reason, there's an issue, people die or get hurt, it's on you. And then everyone's going to be up in arms, why didn't we have something? To wait for the problem to to come about, to then do something is asinine. We need to be preemptive. And this is happening in lots of areas. It's not saying don't do it, it's saying we want to make sure. I was just in Woodstock for the last week and they're closing a whole road because there's too many visitors to that road. And visitors and and people that are coming in to photograph one farm and look at the leaves and they've got a hundred-plus cars lining the road that can't hold it. The infrastructure can't hold it. And with all the rain that we've had this year and we've seen our roads washing away, we pay for that. We pay for that as taxpayers in this town. Or, you know, the city. So anyways, but and then and then in that area in Woodstock, people were going up and sitting on this farm's porch. You know, it's swimming in their funds. Visitors don't care. They forget that real people live here and live their daily lives. Live on the lake. And I love that summer people, there's a whole community, but fireworks every night, you know, because they're here to party and hang out and have fun. And they should, but they forget that real people live here and have to get up at eight or six in the morning and go nuts. So having ordinances that are safety-minded makes sense. I think that there's definitely a few things in here. So Airbnb does your taxes for you. So we don't need to, right now, have a New Hampshire meals and rooms tax license number to collect that tax because Airbnb does it. That is one of the benefits. But outside of that, if you are renting even once a week, you should need to, or even once a year, that's tax that you're supposed to be collecting, but then you have to have a license. And so if you're not doing that, then you're, you know, either have to list or you're just doing it under the table, then don't tell the town. And if you're, the fees should go up. And if you're not breaking the law, then you shouldn't have a problem with the fees. You know, follow the ordinance. And if you're not, then then it's a problem. But it is a burden on the the rest, if everyone else in the town, it's a burden on our, your neighbors, it's a burden on our roads, systems, fire departments, et cetera. And so I'm a fan of this. I do have some questions about tents because if someday I want to do glamping, but these are nitpicky things. But overall, you know, just having a willingness or waiting for there to be a problem to happen in order to do something is, I don't think that's smart.
Lindsey, I'm gonna have you, no, that's fine. I'm gonna have you send those questions, though, to add so that we can, as we work on things, we can address them. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna continue. So the rules of the meeting are everyone gets to speak who's here and then I gotta go to the folks online who are patiently waiting, who are so nicely staying on mute. So is there anybody present here who has not spoken yet? Go ahead, please.
Me, Davis, live on Lock Haven Road. I was at a cookout this weekend and listening to everybody talk, you think people be talking about sports, you know, what their grandchildren doing, they were talking about exactly the same thing. And what they had to say was, they had the ordinances, they thought it was going to be great, but nobody enforced it. There was nobody to enforce it. So if you don't enforce them, the one is going to not happen. And I was, I was very surprised at this conversation. I think they were all eight there and this is the sad-saying conversation. Like you said, that's probably.
Go ahead.
John McBeacon on that Golden Lake. We reside on the property, we have a rental on the property where we live. I think you need to take into consideration where you've got an owner occupied the property that's also rented because the control is there.
Thank you. One quick question. Your name?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Dory McBeacon also on Shaker Boulevard. I've heard a lot of talk about safety and septics. What is the inspection process and the permitting process for long-term rental properties?
I would say you are, you have a septic design that's supposed to be made. And I know that not everybody has an up-to-date conforming septic. I don't think we want to live in a nanny state where we ask everyone to go around, but we're not talking about having a couple of extra people. We're talking about rolling a party potentially and of many people into a four-bedroom septic. So I think that is a reasonable question, but that's something, we have New Hampshire codes that govern how septics are installed in a planning office. So the planning office would oversee questions, especially if there was an issue and it was reported, we have folks that go check there.
Yeah. Yeah, we rely on state law for that.
And I saw more hands. Go ahead.
AJ Horvath from Route four A. First of all, I just want to note that I never thought I would actually be in a median, a small town in New Hampshire where people are arguing for fees to go up, but.
Two, just going back to the premise, so I just wanted to ask a question. How does this fit in with the rewrite of the zoning ordinances that are that are kicking off? And also the master plan, how does this fit in to that whole process? And the second question that I have is, do we need an ordinance to create a registry? So when you read the master plan, there's lots of great data in there. Where did that come from? Can we do a registry to capture a lot more information even beyond short-term rentals around our housing stock that can actually help us make better decisions as a town?
Go ahead.
My name is Sam Cook on that Golden Lake. Firstly, I definitely appreciate the opportunity to have us all here to discuss this. It's an important topic. Echoing along one of the earlier comments, I'm really, I would love to know more about this increase in short-term rentals and now, not getting the answer now, but I think it's a follow-up. Is it, was it over the last three years, is it five minutes, ten units? What that composition, that really looks like, I think would be helpful in terms of context. And I think as some others have mentioned, understand the classification of the short-term rentals, whether it's owner-occupied, you know, people that are members of the community that are active, contributing to the migrant safer community versus the meaningless faceless. I think that's a great idea that we should look at, putting short-term rentals into those kind of classifications. So I think that's a consideration that I hope that you all take really seriously. I am, when I think about the, I'm hearing about noise, fireworks, parking, septic for the lake. You know, I feel like, I think it's important, it is part overreaching and that we're not getting, that we're not burdening or being unfair to rental properties. And people that are living here are also people in probably, I'd say, with septics when it comes to not wanting to be in a nanny state. The quality of people's septics that are not renting their properties at all, that are not, let's say, contributing to the health of our septics. That we might be lopping some of these other issues into unfairly looking at rental, local rental property owners versus versus those ones that are full-time and maybe are contributing to some of the same, the same situation. So, thank you.
Other folks who are present here who want to comment? You're gonna wait because I'm doing the folks online. If there's nobody else who wants to comment in, first-time commenters in the, go ahead. Thank you, sorry. Stand up.
Star Drive, live on Crystal Lake. I live on a roof that does have three short-term rentals and it's not real long. I love all my neighbors, but short-term rental does change the flavor of your neighborhood. Because it seems like people that rent, they're not attuned to that you have a fifteen mile an hour speed sign on your road. They have no idea what goes into maintaining dirt roads. They have no idea what old people walk their dog. They have no idea who has blind driveways and they have to be careful. The crowds are just zipping through so they can have their fun week or two week. I'm not saying they're bad people, but they're renting and they're not part of the neighborhood, so the neighborhood doesn't.
You, please.
Like, I'm not against short-term rentals, but I'm definitely for some, I'm definitely for the ordinance, whether it has some tweaks in it. But I do see that knowledge will change some people's behavior. I see lots of safety issues on the lake. Just for instance, there's cyanide bacteria warning, the rentals that are in the lake, the rental people are like thinking, oh my God, their owners didn't even tell them. I think people abuse boating issues on the lake. I'm not sure that they even know what proper boating is on the lake or they're just bearish or weak, maybe. Don't care, but.
We're gonna not do side conversations. I don't know who it is, but remember, we can't hear with the thing and the side conversation. Keep going.
What I'm just saying is that I do believe that I am for short-term rentals. I wouldn't want to take that right from anyone, but as I see now, there's not enough good communication from the owners of the short-term rentals, in some cases, not all and not everybody. But I think there's possibly too many people staying in the houses that they're not aligned with the number of bedrooms on their property card that tie into their septic. That would be a great way to regulate and easy to do when someone registers. I definitely love what Lindsey said to many other people. Thank you.
Becky Horvath, eight twenty-five, New Hampshire Route four A. And part of what I'm hearing is is the the need for data-informed decisions. And I think, you know, you spoke about the premise of why this was built and we've got four bullet points of of saying that the ordinance is written for these following purposes. And trying to get out ahead, but this timeline that's happened from when this was first. and trying to get out ahead, but this timeline that's happened from when this was first written and started, a lot has changed. And enough so that the, the four bullets, if you were to look at the data, the research that's coming out with other towns who have gone forward with varied ordinances to try to control behaviors of people and, you know, the recreational uses. They're coming out a split on whether it was really effective or not. So I think, you know, to, a lot of people spoke to what is happening in our own town. A is one set of data. The other is, all right, what's happened in towns who have moved forward with ordinances? Were they successful? Did it make any difference? What impact was it? Because it, like, preserving the quality, quantity of housing stock or the, um, property values and quality of life or budding residences, depending on which town and which research you look at, that's in question. That's not an assumption that you can make is that this ordinance would actually provide to that purpose. So I would just encourage the select board to take that time to actually say, okay, let's relook at it and take a scan of the environment first before even going to the tweaks of the ordinance, because the ordinance in and of itself may or may not be written to the right purpose. If that makes sense.
Okay. Anybody who hasn't spoken here? Go ahead.
Yeah, Tom Claus, Holly Drive. Been living here for about three years. One of the things for me that has made moving here and, and loving this community is the folks I'm homeowners here, is an absolutely amazing, amazing place to live. My worry is, is I don't want, we know there's a housing problem. I mean, you see in the paper all the time, there's a housing problem there as there is. And my concern is, is having the no-name businesses buying homes and treating those as a business. And whatever we can do to prevent them from really affecting this community, I think needs to be taken into consideration because I think it'll ruin what a lot of us love about.
For folks who haven't spoken? Go ahead, Shirley.
I just wanted to truly agree, uh, add one thing. I agree with a lot of the things that other people have said. But I think our lakes are our number one, most importantly, source in this town. And we need to do something to, don't wait till there is a problem. We do something to prevent the overloading of the septic systems. We are already having cyanobacteria problems and the rain, the stormwater runoff we've had. If there's any systems that are being overused or it's just going into the like. And, but this isn't just a rental problem. There are, your residents should have systems that aren't working properly too.
Have you spoken? No?
I was a before, I just have, um, I live on, um, Massoma Lake and I just have two questions. How does this entail the trailer park? Because they have an awful lot of action going on. I don't mean to, I'm just, just a, just a question. And I really feel, I think, this was said, a lot of the things have been said to take under consideration, but I think the criteria needs to be looked at a little bit more. And I, um, there are requirements, Airbnb does request there are, are requirements at the town, make sure you get your occupancy, some of these things. I'm getting directed.
I think.
Could you say your name?
Yeah, Paul Florin. And we live on Rainier Road. And we live year-round. I think my wife is confused. I think that. She's talking about is in, um, 4A.
Okay.
We do, just as a clarification, we do have mobile home parks in Enfield and in Lebanon. And they are, when they do a new septic design, they do have requirements, so.
So it's okay.
Well, they're year-round residents and they have requirements that, that do comply, they have to comply with state requirements, so. Yeah. But, wait, taken, was that, did that kind of wrap up what you were trying to say?
Yeah.
I just don't want to skip you.
I just think the ordinance are something that's a factor, but I think that criteria really needs to be looked at that you're asking.
Other folks who are present who have not spoken, who want to speak in round one? Yeah, we're gonna go to the folks who've been waiting nicely online. Michael Donnelly, would you please unmute?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you so much. Great to be able to address my fellow property owners in Enfield, New Hampshire, where I, my wife grew up and I grew up in Grafton. Graduated from Massoma High School and it was great to see Mr. LaCroix in the room. Hey, Mr. LaCroix, the father of my classmate from Massoma High School. And, uh, you know, I lived in Boston for a long time and my wife and I bought a property, um, as a vacation home up on Lock Haven Road. And a job moved me away from the area. But we still have family in Grafton and Enfield and we come up every year, sometimes several times a year to visit. And being able to rent our property as a vacation rental makes it possible for us to do that. And I think there are a lot of people who are in a similar situation where, you know, I mean, just one use case here. And, you know, we live in a country that was founded on this idea of self-governance, that we trust our fellow citizens to be good neighbors. And when they're not, we have ways of dealing with that. We have ordinances that probably can address many of the problems that are in this, uh, in this ordinance. And I guess I get a little bit concerned, Madam Chair, when the government gets involved to impose regulation like this, because what happens when the government imposes regulation? It's really picking winners and losers. You talk about corporations, faceless corporations. I'm not a faceless corporation. I'm just a sole proprietor running one vacation rental. I do have one in another state, but let me tell you something. The profit margins are not very high. In a lot of ways, this is a label of luck for some people. Occupancy rates have gone down, not making a ton of money here. Okay, we love the place, we're trying to maintain it and keep it up. But who can afford the money? Big corporations. So, you know, if you want more corporations coming in, sure, raise the prices, increase the fees, increase the regulation, make it so that small businesses like me can't operate and can't maintain a property like this. So I could go on for a lot of, uh, time here, but I think this is a, a solution that's looking for a problem. I totally oppose the ordinance. I hope, uh, everybody in Enfield will just say, you know what? There's 17 Airbnbs. Do we really need an ordinance of this magnitude to deal with 17 Airbnbs? And it's great to see all of you there and I'll see you the next time I come up, I hope.
Thank you. Barbara Jones, if you please unmute.
I'm Barbara Jones. I live at 14 Johnston Drive, not on the lake, but near it. I've been looking into Airbnbs because the rental next door has now turned into an Airbnb. And I, I can see a neighborhood, a small neighborhood going basically all Airbnb. Doing the math, my neighbor makes the same amount of money, and I don't blame her at all, in one month that she was making renting her house for a year. It's a money-making machine for people who are doing that as a business, not as a side job. So many people have said so many correct things here. One, Mr. Claus said the integrity of the neighborhoods is critical in Enfield. It's a town of neighborhoods. And when you, and when houses become Airbnbs where they can be closed all winter, it destroys the neighborhood where people don't break bread together, they don't watch after their kids, they don't watch after the old people or the dogs. You're just in a sea of empty houses where people from away are making a lot of money. The other thing is, I totally approve of this ordinance, but those fees are laughable. Come on. They should be, it should be like a fit, I was gonna say, at least $300 fee to just become an Airbnb, much less, $120 is laughable. These people are making three grand a week in this particular case. What's $120? Anyway, I, I am totally for this and I think that you are ahead of the curve here. A lot of, a lot of towns are, are adopting these regulations and I think they're right to do it.
Thank you, Barbara. We're gonna move on. Rick Sam, could you please unmute?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Rick Sam and I live at 23 Bridge Street on the lake. I have many, many questions, but I know I don't have the time to ask them all. The first question or the most important question I have is, how are you going to control the number of occupants in a house? Your ordinance suggests that it will be twice the number of bedrooms plus two. Now suppose someone bought my house. And for those of you who don't know where it is, Bridge Street is the last street on the north side of Main Street for the bridge. My house is, has three bedrooms. I could easily add a fourth bedroom. I have a garage or an external building, three levels, including a garage, where I could add another bedroom. What's to stop me from converting my three-bedroom home into a five-bedroom home? Now, before I go further with that, I happen to live next door to an Airbnb. Now, the tax card, I don't know if you can see this, but the tax card for that home indicates that it is three bedrooms. There have been 10 guests there routinely through the summer. I don't know how you're gonna control that. I think registration is a good first step, but you're not gonna get any town official, a law enforcement official coming up to the house to check it unless they have a warrant. Anyway, my big question is, what's to stop somebody from, let's say, buying my home and converting it from three bedrooms to five bedrooms and making it Airbnb? And all of a sudden now there are 12 occupants? Now I'll stop there because I could go on for way too long. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know how I unmuted.
Okay, I think, yes. I love hearing myself twice, but not, it's very confusing.
I'm not sure why, but my mute button seems to be going from muted to unmuted. Trust me, I'm not touching my computer. May I make one final statement? Suppose somebody buys my three-bedroom home, adds two bedrooms. How are you going to restrict the number of occupants? Can you somehow change the zoning so that if my current tax card says three bedrooms, it cannot be increased to five bedrooms or six bedrooms?
Okay, Rick, we've muted you. Don't touch on the computer.
Let me try one more time then, not hearing myself. So go ahead and answer because we, there are rules, right? You can't just like change your house.
Yeah, septic systems are approved per the number of bedrooms. So if you increased bedrooms, you'd have to get a building permit and you'd have to have an approved septic system for that many bedrooms at your house. That's how that would be handled. If someone illegally built a bedroom, it's no different than if they illegally built a bedroom now. Hopefully sooner or later we find out about that and we'll deal with that appropriately.
Pro tip, you're supposed to get a permit. We have nice people to help with that. Before I come back to this room for a second comments, do I have, do I have any other folks online who'd like to make their first comments? And you have to use the raise hands tool. If you've not used this platform before, it's typically on the top. Or you can usually right-click on yourself and then hit raise. I think I'm going once, twice, three times. We're gonna come back into this room. Okay, um, I've got multiple, so I had, I'm gonna go Lindsay, Harry. I'm sorry, Dave. Right, Dave, you were the first second com, oh no, Rob has not spoken. That's how we're gonna do this. Okay, Rob, then Dave, then Lindsay, then Harry, then Carol. Got it?
Hey, Rob Walls, I live on Bridge Street, Bridge Street on Massoma Lake. I have a neighbor, a Rick Sam that just spoke. He was asking a question if he wanted three bedrooms to five bedrooms. And you were saying about the septic system. That's how the town law is stored. So he did, he left that out. So that's gonna, it was a good question. He just.
Well, it's still a capacity issue and you still need a permit for those bedrooms because we have to allocate the capacity in the sewer system as well.
All right, yes.
So one more thought, uh, again, still speaking as a private citizen. You need to consider ADUs when you're looking at the big picture of short-term rentals. So a gentleman over there pointed out, he has always like an apartment above a garage, separate cabin, whatever. How does that fit into the whole picture? I think there needs to be a discussion.
Okay, so, uh, shoot, my brain just went.
And you're Lindsay Smith, just for the sake of the minute.
Shaker Hill, Route 259, Shaker Hill Road, Shaker Hill Down and Breakfast. And I do agree that property owners that are on site is a very different situation, that not everything where people are off-site are big corporations. We do have folks, but if you have a connection to this community, have, like, I have friends who have a rental in Rehoboth Beach. They have a property management company because they can't get there. They, you know, you, having a connection somewhere. I saw Jim Taylor's name. They've got some fun stories in Plainfield, you know, about Airbnbs and, and volunteer fire departments getting called out in the middle of the night, you know, to answer a fire alarm that's going on. So there's lots of those kinds of things. But the other thing is, how does this fit in with the master plan? That's come up a couple of times as co-chair of the master plan. There's a delicate balance, you know, Enfield has always had a health, you know, there's always been a tension between long-term, people who live here and our summer residents. You know, we increase by a third in the summer by people that own camps and own homes, you know? And, um, it's, there's a little bit of a difference there. But we're also talking about people that are just coming in and going. We want them to come in and enjoy this town. We need those dollars. So this isn't against that, but it is about safety. It is about regulation. It is about the whole community. And I think that, how do you enforce an ordinance? Well, you can't enforce it if it doesn't exist, is number one. So if at least it exists, then there's something, and then it's about neighbors. So if you know that the people next to you are consistently having 10 people in a three-bedroom house, unfortunately, you're gonna have to report that, you know, if it's causing a disturbance. It's, it's kind of one of those things, like, um, not that we all need to be reporting each other, but if it's, if there's an issue, the same with, you know, people lighting up fireworks or something like that. It's really hard to enforce the fireworks ordinance if they go off and try to, try to call a noise at night. But you can't do it at all if there doesn't exist. But I do think that, that local property owners, especially people that are on site, is a different situation. Maybe folks that are doing it less than 30 days out of the year is a different situation and there might be some good tiers to it. I don't think we need to raise an application fee over $50 because that makes it Enfield-friendly, but maybe raise the fees for violations, you know, and that's the deterrent. I hate the rule of deterrence, but I still, I love to talk outside.
Okay.
All right. Harrison Trumbull, 33 Rena Road. I have a lot of good ideas here. It seems clear we need a two-tiered system, one for primary homeowners who are renting their own home they live in, not a home that they bought or rent, but their very own home for less than a certain number of days, a couple of weeks, whatever. You could adjust to have low fees. You could adjust to have some different code requirements. I like the idea of the select board being an opportunity where you can come and get variance. You wanna rent your place for a couple of weeks or maybe just a week, and your windows are too small. Boy, or could say, oh yeah, that's okay. Yes, you've got a two-bedroom house, and people are close to the excellent. The one thing, and now, the other thing I've found interesting is one of our newest residents is the most passionate about maintaining the quality of the neighborhoods, and I think that's a concern we all have. But one other thought I had about the ordinance was, it also protects the people who are investing because they have in one place the rules that they're gonna need to follow. It's not scattered throughout the town website. They can go to one place, and they know I can only put this number of people in this unit. These are the rules we have to follow, and I think that's a good protection. We had a house on Mascone Lake just recently sold $1.6 million. I'm thinking, that's a lot of money for a house to live in, to me. Maybe these people are planning to get $2,000 or $3,000 a week, 50 weeks out of the year, and they might be in for a surprise when they find out they can't put 20 people in there. So they would know in advance before they buy, these are the rules, and you have to live by them. And it gives, makes it an easy way to enforce because here it is, all in one spot. So thanks. Great meetings.
Carol Winchester. One question I have, that these people are coming up and buying properties and essentially operating them as businesses, are these properties then being taxed as commercial properties? I mean, they should be.
Good point.
I mean, why are we as homeowners being taxed at the same rate as something somebody else said where they're making $3,000 a month? I don't, I don't know about Lindsey left, but I don't know if she's being taxed as a commercial enterprise, as a bed and breakfast, but it certainly wouldn't be fair to her if she is, but these Airbnbs who come in and purchase the property for the sole purpose of renting them out all year. What, you know, why are they having an unfair advantage when we have people in town who are stripping to make their tax payments every six months? That's just not right. And I think that also goes back to having multiple tiers. It sounds like a lot of the problems are in properties around the lake. And maybe that needs to be a tier all of its own.
Okay, so we have, okay.
I find the ordinance so general. Humans are fascinating, thankfully, because throughout history, we've never been really good at legislating judge's behavior as much in this actually being enforced, regardless of what it is, as they do with all those magical bags of dog feces along rail trail magically disappearing. So please keep that in mind.
Gonna just kind of go around, like, do we have anybody who hasn't commented, anyone wants a secondary comment? Any of the folks online who haven't spoken or would like to add? Gonna do once, twice?
Somebody's waving.
Waving? Oh, okay. The person who's waving? You can unmute.
I'm Carolyn Wallace. I live in 47 Butman, on the lake. We bought this home in 2012, before, I don't know, maybe Airbnb existed. I don't really know because I'm not sure. But we bought it as a family home. I have five children of my own, all of which are married, and we have 10 grandchildren. And our objective was, at least once a year, or whenever we could, everybody comes together and we spend a week together. My son, kids live in California. They live in Delaware. They live wherever. And we just don't get to spend time together, quality time. So as I hear people talking about, 20, it's 20 of us when we get together. Now, granted, we'd probably kill each other if we got together for more than a week at a time, but that's something that we've been doing as a family tradition, and I expect that I want to continue to do that. But when I hear people, there's a couple of things that bother me. So one, this is a family home. We do do Airbnb when we can't be there or aren't there because I think we've invested a lot of money and a lot of time to make it a wonderful place for families. And if another family can come and enjoy that space, I want to do it. We don't rent to parties. We interview the people who we rent to. We have repeat renters. It's grandparents, and they're just like us, grandparents and their kids and their grandkids. So somebody might slip through, but we find out if it does, and they don't come back. That's one thing. The other thing, I don't know how people feel about finances. Well, another thing. We employ a lot of people, the housekeepers, the property manager, the pick-up-the-trash people. We spend a lot of money into the town of Enfield based on the use of the house. And then finally, I didn't, my kids didn't grow through Enfield public schools. And when we moved here and there's new schools were built, and we got hit with that tax, my, our taxes are like $18,000 a year, $18,000 a year. And yes, I do need help, and I'm looking for any opportunity that I can find to help get money to pay that tax. I'm just retiring. I'm 67 years old. I don't know where it's gonna come from. So I really, I hear the business thing, but I, I think that the way that this has to be looked at will have to be in a tiered way. And I don't, I want you to understand and hear a real family's life situation versus assuming that everybody who rents their house out to Airbnb is a billionaire and off making money to go skipping down the road. So I just wanted to share that. I heard people's perspectives. I think that that's something that should be considered. I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other folks online? So if you either raise your hand or you can give a little hand wave if you have your camera on. Okay, thank. Any final comments? And I don't want you guys to think this is not the end of it. It doesn't get voted on today. It doesn't get implemented tonight. This was our listening session. If you go home and you reflect on this, or you can watch it again online on YouTube. How exciting is that? That's my plug. These all go onto YouTube as well. So if you have questions or comments, I'm gonna tell you, you can send them to Ed because some of this is about us learning. We take them. But it's all joking aside, right, we, we need to work through and collect all this information in your thoughts so that we can do something that is a good compromise for all of our neighbors. So I'm gonna take one final pass and say, is there anybody else who wants to comment from the public? Because when I close the public hearing, we go back here, and that's when you don't get to comment. Anybody? Go ahead.
This is the input that you receive. What's the next step? You get together and discuss the input, and then make modifications on whatever this ordinance is gonna be, and then do we get another chance to give you input on that, or what happens next?
I'll let you, since we talked about it a little.
Yeah, we can ebb and flow a little bit on this, but I think it would come back to the select board in another meeting just to continue the discussion, make some edits, see what we want to do, whether we want to move forward, not move forward, all of those things. And, you know, I would recommend that the select board, no matter how this moves forward, has another public hearing before we make a final decision to either send it to town meeting or enact it as an ordinance, depending on, you know, what the law says we need to do moving forward.
One more question. It would be nice to see the results of this statistic on how many complaints have come into the town over the year 2022, 2023, whatever's going on. How many were police complaints and how many just complaints? Would be nice to see that issue, to see if we're dealing with something here that, it sounds like is maybe not as many as we might be concerned, and I hear, and I hear what you're saying. Try to get there before it happens. But sometimes you implement something that causes more of a problem than what it's worth, and enforcing it is a tough situation. It's full-time residents in this town, unlicensed vehicles in the courtyard, sheds being built, and, you know, I'm getting any permits for it. They're right around the town, and this neighbor here keeps his place beautiful, this one over here. And that's hard to control because you're walking up the board guy that he owns that property. You have these rules, but boy, it's tough. And then it's tough to implement them because they've been here 30 years, and that's the way they've lived.
From Mascone Lake, right in Enfield my whole life.
Raleigh McCroy, right up in Enfield. I have a place over at the Bean Foster Circle that is a long-term rental. I don't do any VRBO or any of that. And to touch base on one of the things that Carol brought up, back in the day, you never had to have a boat and license. I've been a avid voter since I was 14 years old. You could drive a boat once you got taught. And that's all stuff that has to be, you know, you can complain, but it can be reinforced by the Marine Patrol and all that. They have to. If you notice, they're not out on the lake all that much. I've been out a bunch and don't see them a lot, and I think it's because they're short on manpower. The other, the other thing that it brought up is, I know some people that have a camp on Mascone Lake, and they have a big family gathering. And if you take that family gathering, and there's 12 people there for 30 days, or break that up into weekends, that's just multiplied by the people, like 360 flushes for their toilet. If there's four people that live in a house year-round, that's like 1,400. So some of those houses aren't getting used that, and there are people in town that have a house on the lake. They do not have state-approved septics. The one I have definitely does. It's far enough off the lake. The, but there are some that don't. So how is that gonna get patrolled if there's five people and they got a two-bedroom septic that's not approved? And pointing the fingers at a lot of different people, and that's their everyday home. And, you know, some things on the ordinance are okay, some things I'm not, you know, totally for because it's things gonna have to be enforced, and who's gonna do it?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jan Smith. I actually grew up on Mascone Lake from the time I was five, on Logan Road. My parents had a cottage there. Then I got married, moved to Lebanon, sold that house to move out here to bring, build my dream house. We live now on Star Drive. I got away from Lebanon here, and now I'm getting a Lebanon out here. And it's just not right. I agree with this wholeheartedly for the simple fact that I live on a road that has free BRBOs. This is my home. This is just where they're coming to have a party. I'm against all that. I'm for this. Thank you.
Any thoughts? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm Eric Pepperd, I'm on Crystal Light. I think what you've got to do, from what I'm hearing here, is differentiate between the BnB, Abnbs, and a local person trying to pay their property tax. Comes down to that, is that simple? And you're gonna take that person that's trying to pay their property tax and put a burden on them that increases their expenses, and you're still gonna have the Airbnbs. So I guess that's as simple as it is.
Name again for the minute taker. Thank you.
96 and 4A, The Rock Girl. I think one of the things to look at too is, I'm in the opposite position where I bought my house 13 years ago and have done everything I possibly can to keep it. It's like, I never thought I'd have a house on a lake. Having the opportunity to rent it a few times during the summer has allowed me to keep up with my taxes, to keep it. And I feel like I've earned that right by being part of the community, taking care of my home for these now 13, 14 years, that this is the opportunity so I can hold on to it. So when I get a few weekends off, maybe I can go to it. But it, it works in both directions. And the last thing I want to say is, I think there's a piece of commerce that we want to look at too because the restaurants and baited hook and whatnot, that brings income into our town that otherwise wouldn't be there. I don't know if I lived in my house every day, every weekend I'd be going to get ice cream at the baited hook. But if I have someone in there three weekends, three different people, they're gonna all go get ice cream. So I'd be interested in how it affects our commerce as well. Thank you.
Anybody else with some?
I'm the chairman.
Yeah, I think I was gonna go ahead and close, like, to close.
I believe that we closed the public hearing.
You have a second. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, passes unanimously. So what happens now, for those of you who have not been to a fun public hearing with us before, is that we have a little bit of a discussion. I would ask that you still, you're welcome to stay and listen and learn. You're welcome to send comments on to Ed. He's town manager at enfields.na. You're welcome. He's a great guy. So, but I want you to understand that this is the portion where the board debates, and then if you have something that you learn or you think of, then you're gonna use that avenue, and then we're gonna be back and working at this, if not the last thing. I really appreciate you guys all coming, and I hope that you'll stay, but I understand if you want to bounce. So, that being said, I'd like to go around the table, starting with Eric, and just, yeah. You're the one at the end of the table. That's how.
Thank you all for coming. It's been great. I think we have a lot to think about. I think the next steps are, Ed already, you know, he sent us copies of some Word documents is to, you know, track changes and edit those and send our feedback to Ed after we've digested what we've heard. I'm certainly not ready to like do that in real time right now. And then I think we should set a goal for ourselves that haven't done, not necessarily this calendar, but in time for next, next year. I think we should be pretty aggressive in our schedule. There's not a whole lot of reason to delay talking and thinking about it, regardless of what the outcome is.
Thank you. Alice?
And I think, thank you everyone for coming out so much. I, some questions were raised that I hadn't thought of before. There's, like Eric, I'm not ready to do this in real time, but I do have questions particularly concerning, I heard really loud and clear the need to make data-driven decisions, so I'm excited to see how we can like come together around that point. And then I'm really interested to learn more about how it'll, how we'll understand if this is gonna be a select board thing or a town meeting thing. So that'd be helpful. But yeah, I have a lot of notes to digest for ourselves.
I think this has to do with the environment in which we live and what kind of environment we wish to live in. That relates to the water quality of the lake. That relates to the atmosphere of the neighborhood in which we live. And I hear people being concerned about that. I am concerned about enforcement. There's nothing more frustrating than having- than having an ordinance that we either don't want to enforce or can't enforce. So we're going to need to create, I think, something fairly simple, not too complex. But it's going to have some real teeth also. I, I think that in, in all the planning documents that we've worked on, we've always said the lakes are one of the crucial features of Enfield. The natural environment is crucial to life in Enfield. The, the neighborhood is crucial to life in Enfield. We've got to support these important aspects of the town. Thank you.
Tracy?
I'll reiterate something that Eric started with. It is a lot to think about, the complex situation as far as I'm concerned. Because I come to it, uh, in full disclosure as a lake resident, also a, an owner of a full-time rental property. I don't use it as an Airbnb. It's just a leased year-round rental. But I come to it from two different directions. And the first direction is whether I'm being fair to the people that need an Airbnb. Perhaps that's a bad generic term. Uh, but need the additional income and are doing it in a way that provides them with the opportunity to pick up some money for paying their taxes and other bills. We've also increased our zoning ordinances to allow people to build ADUs. It would be a shame to then cut back on that and say, no, you can't have that ADU to use as a potential rental unit. Because that may have been their intention in wanting to do it. Uh, but I also appreciate the risk to things at the lake. Um, having been a lake resident for a few years, it was not more than six years ago that I replaced our septic system to the tune of an awful lot of money. But I know what it takes to have a proper system when you live by the lake. We had to bring in a, an engineer and a designer. Concord, as a matter of fact, specialized in lakeside septic systems. And I'd have to agree. I know that there are properties all around the lake right now that are on failed septic systems. Uh, they may be a B and B, they may not be a B and B, but they have a failed system. And there's no regulate, uh, there's no regulation that requires them to declare it beyond the width. So if there isn't the evidence that it's failed visually, it doesn't mean it hasn't failed. And that it doesn't take much to trip that over the side. So it's a mixed sort of bag and a very complex problem. I think it needs to be reviewed frankly by a smaller committee to represent both lake owners, current B and B owners, uh, to come up with a solution for the Select Board. But I do agree with John on a much simplified ordinance. Uh, there's way too much in this ordinance. Uh, that can be added later. We need to start with a very simple ordinance and to work with it if we feel we need an ordinance at all. Once that problem has been empirically proven, we need to come up with the empirical evidence to show that the problem actually exists. We need to quantify it. But we also need to listen to more anecdotal thoughts as well.
I'm taking notes too. So I think you can probably see everyone in this room has taken a considerable amount of notes and it's going to take us a while to distill them and get our thoughts together. I, I really do appreciate and want to echo how helpful this was because when we work together, we come out with much, much better solutions. That's why we don't do things as individuals in this town because we are able to work together and learn from each other. So I'm really looking forward to looking at some of the data, but I think also looking at the anecdotes, right? Because not everybody calls the police or the town manager on their neighbors when they have an issue, right? Like, so I relate my anecdote where I picked somebody physically picked them out of the room with like, oh, you can't do that. And they said, I'm not downtown. I'm not near the police department. I said, I trust the police chief's house. Right? So I mean, this is small town life, right? And we joke about it, but really being welcoming and being nice. We want people to come to Enfield and have fun. I think one of the things that we has not been brought up tonight, um, that I really love about having people be able to come and try out Enfield is that they might decide they love us and they want to live with us. And I love that balance of old time and new time residents. It's one of my favorite things. So I'm a quote unquote old timer, which means I've been here since I was a kid. Um, and my family lives on the lake. So I kind of, um, my, my, my extended family and I have waterfront that goes down onto a water volume. Um, the brook that comes out of skeptical pond. So I hear a lot of what you guys are saying about water quality and just noise. I think the piece that I got separately offline, I had a number of phone calls and I appreciate those as well and emails and messages through the website. And I just want to say, I think the thing I didn't hear tonight, um, outside of just the voting was I, I heard a lot of concerns about, um, the wake and about the erosion to the shoreline and just educating people. And so I think those are really interesting points that we can, can talk about. And maybe we can do this from an educational point. I think I personally want you to know, I feel tonight, my sense is that we need some kind of ordinance, um, what it looks like, we're going to be working on. So I think that probably unless you guys want to do something else, we'll charge everybody with sending their notes into Ed. And we will calendar it for follow-up. Do we want to do it not maybe next meeting, but October? Or what is, we know what our next meeting looks like?
Well, we'll see when we get enough notes.
All right.
But it'll be, it could be one of them next few meetings we'll talk about it again.
Thank you all so much. And you're welcome to save the rest of the meeting. Guys, this is our two-minute warning. We're doing a recess. We're going to be in the meeting. One minute warning and you guys are welcome to have a conversation, but it's not going to be here. We're going to be meeting. Oh, they're moving. Once we're saying we'll take a seat. Okay, seven forty. We're going to pull this back together and keep on going. We're not going to have any more side conversations. If you want to have a side conversations, you're welcome to go out and have it. If you want to stay, we would love to have you stay. Okay. And Alice is going to rejoin us in just a second. So we are going to move on to the business of the evening. Um, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to skip over briefly minutes report and let the Holly Drive folks. Um, is that okay with you? So I'm going to go ahead. And so we have welcome, we're welcoming the folks from Holly Drive who have asked to come before the board and talk to us. And Brad is going to tee this up. He's going to introduce himself and tell us a little bit about why you're here.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, so for those of you that don't know me, my name is Brad Rich. I live in Holly Drive. I am here speaking for the Holly Drive Road Maintenance Association. And the first thing that we would like to convey to you is our gratitude for giving time on your agenda. Uh, I think it was proven beyond a shadow of doubt that you have a busy, uh, agenda and we appreciate you taking the time to listen to us. Uh, we have a, a couple of things that we want to talk about that we feel very strongly about. And again, we're very, very appreciative of the time. So I'm going to be talking about three major things. All of them have to do with the stormwater runoff uh, from, uh, the most recent storms. Um, the first one is, uh, probably arguably the most important, and that is the quality of water that is entering the lake under and sometimes over Holly Drive. Um, with the most recent storm, uh, there was some catastrophic overflowing from, uh, many of the brooks, uh, over the road, et cetera. Um, as you can see, we have a lot of people here, uh, that live on Holly Drive. This is an issue very important to us. There have been a long history of, um, stormwater issues, uh, on the road. We literally have documentation back from the seventies, uh, still photos, videos, um, various reports from civil engineers. Uh, and even some eyewitnesses that were actually here, uh, back in the seventies. So it's a, it's a big, uh, deal to us. Um, I think, uh, one of the most important things to realize is that these storms are increasing in frequency. The category catastrophic storms and the severity of these storms is increasing, which is a, a real concern to us. But just to give you an, an example, um, we obviously had the July ninth storm and then a storm a few days later that were, uh, again huge. But a week and a half ago, I was walking down the road. It was lightly raining and the brooks were still brown with silt running directly into the lake unchecked. We got to do something about that. We have got to figure out a way to prevent the water from moving that fast and giving it a chance to slow down the silt to drop out and clear water going into the lake. It's very important. A few weeks ago, Ed, thank you, came to the Crystal Lake Association meeting where he talked about the possibility of working with other, uh, towns and with the state and possibly drafting, uh, working on a complete watershed plan for the area. We applaud that decision. Uh, we are delighted that that, uh, could happen and move forward. But I think we all agree that that's a, that's a project that would be measured in years, not weeks or months. And I would urge the Select Board to, uh, think of ideas how we can do things, uh, around the lake, especially on the Holly Drive side, that would help mitigate some of the damage that is occurring uh, to the, uh, to the lake. Uh, I'm going to pass around, if you wouldn't mind, a map that is, uh, was produced by a, a civil engineer a few years ago. Uh, and, um, it, it points to the second point that I wanted to talk about, and that's stormwater runoff that is damaging, um, Holly Drive. Now, the, the watershed above Holly Drive is from Oak Hill. It's from Boys Camp. It's from Choate. It's from Lock Haven Road itself. And all that water funnels down to, uh, either under or over Holly Drive. The Holly Drive Association takes our road very, very seriously. It's a private road and we understand that we are responsible for maintaining it and we do. We have replaced all thirteen, thirteen?
Ten.
Ten, all 10 culverts on the road in the last few years. We frequently clean out the dishes, the ditches to, uh, clean up the debris. But even that is not enough. Um, with the most recent storm, uh, on July ninth, there were several areas of catastrophic, uh, damage. If you take a look at the little map that I passed out, you look at the bottom, you see a 54 there. That is 54 Holly Drive. That is the, uh, home of Jane and Ed Rippey. Since the July ninth storm, they have been displaced from their home due to the severe damage that was caused by the storm overrun. If you take a look at that shaded area, that is what the symbol engineer produced that showed the, the watershed that actually drains into that one single little brook, uh, that flows through the Rippeys property. We went up, uh, the woods and, and looked at the area that was being drained. There is no less than six culverts. Six culverts, some of them as large as 36 inches in diameter that feed that one stream. It just doesn't work. It does not work. The volume of water is too much and in, in the, in the stream can just not handle it. If you take a look around Crystal Lake, you'll see many instances where huge amounts of silt, uh, have been deposited into the lake. Um, and certainly, um, at the Rippeys property as well as other areas around the lake. I think that we need to do something to help prevent or mitigate some of those, uh, circumstances. And lastly, and probably the most contentious is the, um, the pond, the retention pond at the intersection of Holly Drive and Lock Haven. 15 years ago, a long time ago, um, there was a decision made to change the water path of the water coming off Lock Haven. It was redirected to the right-hand side as you go up the hill, uh, to come down Lock Haven. And is fed, that's, that, that major, uh, brook on the right-hand side, again, is fed by, um, six separate culverts, not the same of the ones that I mentioned before. And the agreement at the time was this, this retention pond would be dredged out every other year and that, uh, it would be maintained. And the last storm or the, the, the first large storm on the ninth of July pulled everything out of that pond, silt, gravel, sand. There was a, a ton of cat nine tails. All of that, 100% is completely gone. We have pictures of this and is now in the lake. And it flows down, uh, Holly Drive and crosses, uh, a culvert under the road and goes out by the Crosses residents. That pond needs to be three times the size.
And you on the map, just for the benefit of the board, because I think when I look at it, it looked to me like, and I'm looking at the topography.
You see Holly Drive, you go to the left and the first double line that hits is Lock Haven Road.
Yeah, yeah.
It's right there. You can't see it. There's no, there's no point. There's no pond, but it's right there.
Right. But where is the culvert you're saying it's going out?
Oh, the culverts, the, the culvert, uh, follows the, uh, Holly Drive for about a hundred yards maybe and then passes underneath the, the road.
Actually, it's a ditch.
It's, yeah, it's a ditch. It's through a culvert.
Along 20 Holly Drive, my, my property.
I saw you pulling out of there earlier. You probably saw me driving there. That just helps me visually. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm a very visual person. I guess we could use a lovely map up here too.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that, um, again, that, that retention pond was certainly developed to, to handle the volume of water that it no longer can. Uh, that retention pond needs to be larger, it needs to be deeper. Um, the outflow of that pond needs to be changed and, and developed in such a way that the water has a chance to slow down and the silt drop out before it gets to the culvert, before it enters into the lake. And so that's, that's, uh, an important item, uh, for us. Um, I would end with this. We, we urge the town to take action to help mitigate some of these situations around the lake, particularly Holly Drive. Perhaps a committee. Perhaps a committee made up of individuals or a team made up of individuals that we could meet with town personnel and attempt to figure out what are the, the choke points? What can we do as a town and as a community to solve some of these problems? Certainly redirection of water is an option. More retention ponds is, is I think in, in the, in the mix, certainly. We have to do something. I, we, we can't stand and, and just let these storms continue to worsen and to continue to pollute the lake because that is essentially what has happened. And I will end it there. And again, I thank you for my rant. I hope you take it in the spirit that it was given and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
So what would you expect Town of Venfield to do considering that Holly Drive is a private road?
So that's an interesting point, right? So we're the choke point. Holly Drive is the bottom of the rung, right? We, we have all of the damages that we have to repair at our, our own expense, but the water's not ours, right? It's, it's up several roads. And, and, and I think what, what I would like to see is the town work with us, look at what could be done in terms of a civil engineer, in term, in terms of a plan. There's land that we own on the other side of the road that we would be more than willing to give up depending on a vote from the people sitting behind me for retention ponds. I think this is a lot that could be done to help the situation. Or any ideas that anybody has? Like I said, I'm not a civil engineer, but.
I think we've been having as a town, a lot of conversation about stormwater, not just surrounding the lakes and water bodies, but even right downtown, right? You know, where, because it all flows downhill at the end of the day, not to be silly. So I think it's something we've discussed. I will tell you, if you're interested, there's gonna be a neat presentation on rain, rain gardens. An initial presentation during conservation on Thursday, that will be at seven PM. But I think there are some. Operationally, I feel, and this is my feeling, I think it makes sense to us, the board, it, it needs to continue to go through DPW because they're the folks with the skill set, obviously coordinated by Ed. I did look at the retention pond personally. Again, I was waiting for it to, let's say, dry out. Because it's very, very wet, right? My property is equally as wet as the backside of Holly Drive and it's very, very challenging. So I think working with Ed and having his team continue to, to work on it. I don't, I don't know, other members, just a second, were there other members of the board who wanted to?
I have a couple of questions, if I may. The retention pond that you mentioned, which is at the intersection of Holly Drive and Lock Haven.
Yes.
Whose property is that?
Mike, Mike and Lauren, it's last day.
Say it again, sorry.
So it, it was a, and it was a retention pond that was constructed by the town at some point?
And the state, yeah.
And the state on the private property at some point?
Yep.
And it has since deteriorated to the point of being useless.
Well, I think it's a combination of things. I think the volume of water has increased to the point that that pond, that size of a pond can't handle.
But as it was originally designed, it has failed to do what it was meant to do.
I think that the people behind me would tell you that it was failed from the start.
That it didn't work from the start.
Didn't work from the start.
But it was originally constructed using town resources as well as state resources.
Yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the town actually did the work, but supervised by DES. Thank you.
Correct. That is correct.
And, and when was that possibly done?
Fifteen years ago.
Yep, that's my, I used to drive by it every day, so with a very long contract.
The drainage which is described here that comes down all the way from Choate
Yep.
to the lake, I assume that you've traversed that area to a certain extent? What has changed from whenever it began to drain all that water down the lake? What is different now than?
Yeah, I think there's been more development up on those roads. I think some of it was unintentional, but we, we saw culverts going under people's driveways that fed streams that didn't before. I think the volume of water has increased. I think some of that is probably climate change, right? I think some of it is development up the hill.
So part of the problem has been exacerbated by development, private development on private land.
Yes.
Along this stretch.
But to be honest, what I would do is that I would rely on the civil engineer to, to make that statement. That's what I think, but I by no means am a civil engineer. But that is my interpretation of what has happened.
Do you control enough land to significantly increase the size of the pond?
Yes.
I know that Mike and Lauren have offered to, to need to increase that pond. They said they didn't want them only to let me do that.
But that's just one spot.
Right.
Yeah.
There's, there's, the, the, the issue by the Rippeys is even more drastic and catastrophic. And you should have seen the water. Tom and I were there on that night. It was the scariest weather event I've ever witnessed. It was just crazy. And so there's steps that we need to take and we're all ears will, we're, we're here asking for help.
So I'm the topographic back. I'm assuming these lines have go down.
Are the brooks.
All, all the brooks. Okay, that's what I figured. And so, and those are brooks that have always been there, but now they're getting more water.
Yes, yeah.
Other board members, are we gonna open up to the public? I just wanna make sure I hit you guys first.
I guess what I would say is, we know that storm's getting more intense, getting more water faster. We're getting more runoff. Adaptation's gonna be part of our future. I don't have answers. I don't have solutions, but it is something we need to think about. Well, right now, we're talking about one place. This is something that is it is going to be townwide and statewide as we move forward over the next, you know, fifty years.
Absolutely.
This is the start of something. So having DPW understand, and again, I don't know what the answers are, but how do you deal with the water when you increase the size of a culvert? Because you know you're going to have more water. What happens when it exits the culvert is something we need to start understanding and, and learning to deal with. That's very complicated. We don't own the land as the town.
Right.
It is. It's something we really need to look into.
Yes.
I've talked to Jim and Jeremy about this and I've also mentioned it to the budget committee at our last meeting last week that I'm going to be proposing some of the FEMA money that came to us this year that's gonna be falling into fund balance. Get re-appropriated to be more forward-thinking on stormwater and start addressing some of these issues with that money.
Anyone else on the board? Go ahead, Seeley.
Yes, I'd like to give you a little history on those. Back maybe, I don't know, twenty-five years ago. If you look at Oak Hill Road, there was a, a large subdivision. And at that time, they had their engineer subdivided and had the water from the the watershed, I'm sorry, go down to the Boys Camp Road. At that time, Joe Lashwell, who was the, the town Public Works water driveway head, who worked with us and he, he was amazed at how many culverts along Boys Camp Road that they would need along to go down and much further. And he was talking like fifty-six. But that was much further than the Holly Drive. And what he essentially was saying was, you know, go down, we'll follow, you gotta follow the way the water goes. You can't go, which is, which is what's happening is that you're cutting out, going to the side of the road, going down Lock Haven Road. And people that are coming into the, the lots that are sold are meeting these streams that are coming down and they're altering it, changing them in some way. They're not getting permanent, they're just doing it. So all this is impacting how the water is gonna run. And the biggest, I think the biggest thing that, and they just did it now, Dan, you could go down, up and down Lock Haven Road, see how it fits all the way down. And that really happens, that really adds to the silt. There's no hay bales or anything like that that slows that down. And when you get down to, if anybody that runs Drive, if anybody knows who that is, it's right right up to Ivy Road where, where it drops down, or right across, right there by that driveway, there's a whole slew of water that comes across and it picks it up from the other side. That adds to that Holly Drive. I mean, that's a big impact too.
Yeah.
But it goes down and, and it collects everything else and goes over, goes under and then over the, the project that Dandel's there. That goes to Holly Drive. I knew that was gonna happen, so, but you have to have care of those streams. You've got to get the town involved, make sure they follow the, the streams and not go down the road where it will collect more stuff and then then it will take it down further and you get all the silt. And I think most of you, those on Crystal Lake know the sandbar. And that all comes from the bridge on Boys Camp Road. And that's where that has happened over the years. And I'm, it all is, it blows me right away that no one's upset, they're thinking about, but it goes on. Anyway, that's what I wanted to give you a little history of what happened.
Yeah, I'm gonna, the gentleman in the front purse and then I believe your next Saturday.
I might give some Crystal Lake Road sometimes, Holly Drive, as far I am. We all know the water runs downhill. That's an undisputed law of physics. But what we found during this last big storm this summer, which is not the first time this has happened. Henry Cross came before the town many years ago, my twice-late father, and went toe-to-toe with the board on what was happening on Lock Haven, coming down to Crystal Lake Road. And the silt pond was largely his interaction with the town that DES, that's how that originated. So we've got photographic evidence that he has taken from oh-eight, oh-nine, ten, eleven, where the system has failed and done huge amounts of silt into Crystal Lake. And we've got pictures from sixty-nine, seventy. You look at the lake now, the invasive species growing in that lake is staggering compared to where it was in nineteen sixty-nine, eighty-nine, eighty-seven. All that silt contains nutrients, contains fertilizer, contains everything that this plant life needs to feed on the lake, which is a bad, very bad thing, number one. The silt pond, again, was joint effort with DES and the town. Right now, it's probably, I would guess, sixteen feet longer than it ever has been because it's been blown out. It does not feed into the ditch properly. It flows through the woods now, which shows you how much water is going through there, even though the pond is not rebuilt the way it was originally designed by DES. I did a quick calculation of pitch of Lock Haven Road. It's seven point one five percent from Holly to Choate. Just a quick engineering, it's a rough number because we're dealing with digits here, but the engineering spec for an eight-inch or di- larger diameter sewer pipe is point five two percent. So the pitch from Choate to Holly is almost fourteen times higher than the recommended tilt level for an eight-inch or larger sewer pipe, which means even the thumbnail measurement you're talking about, figuring out a way to slow the water down. How you do that is a methodology that's best left to a civil engineer to come up with that. What can a town do? The question was asked. Increase ditching efforts. We saw some of that on the side of Lock Haven. The thing that started all this with Henry Cross is the culvert that comes across from Ivy and borders across property down towards Lock Haven. That's been blown out. How many times? Three, four times. And the DES solution this last time got blown out in the last big storm of the spring, largely because the colors were blocked and when they let go, it blew everything out. All the colors they put in, all the granite they put in, all the stone they put in, they're all in the, the silt pond and then into the lake. So this is an ongoing issue, but it's not getting any better. We don't expect the town to make it go away like that. It's not possible. I did talk to a former town employee who replaced the thirty-six inch culvert on Boys Camp Road. He said he dug out a galvanized pipe instead of a stone conduit, instead of a wooden culvert. So it's been there a long time. So this is not a new issue, but it's getting worse and all that. So we're willing to work with the town as Brad has pointed out, but I think it's important that the town understand this is not a new problem for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Ed Rippey, fifty-four Holly Drive. And, excuse me. We've lived in our house for twenty-two years. And when first moved there, we have this stream that bisects up front. It's a seasonal stream. And there wasn't much happening, especially in the summer, we would dry up and it was kind of nice. And you could hear it in the spring. It was pretty sound and all that. Well, after about five years, we started to notice that it was starting to run more and more hugely during heavy rainstorm. And back in two thousand and six, I took pictures of the silt that had come down through the stream and deposited in Crystal Lake. And I stuck a ruler in it and the ruler went down eleven inches from this one particular storm. It was a bad storm, obviously. So I spoke to the town manager at the time, gave him the pictures and said, then we were good at this, you know, just kind of let it go. And then in two thousand and fifteen, we had another incident that we could, it was the flow was so strong that it was gripping the sides of the stream and eroding our property. It was threatening our house, you know, the foundation of our house. If this continued on too many occasions. So we met with Conservation Committee that year and asked what could be done, looked into it. And they came up with a couple of suggestions, like throw some hay bales and, and there was putting a holding pond on our property. Well, I don't want holding pond on the property. We did do the hay bales and they lasted about a year each. So what we ended up doing was we hired an environmental scientist who was DES and put fourteen thousand dollars into doing it the right way and fixing the stream and making it stronger with rocks and corals and vegetation. And it's worked beautifully for years. Okay, so that was two thousand and sixteen, so seven years it worked very well. Well, July ninth was just a disaster. There was a horrible storm. And the we're kind of surprised we had company, our grandparents with our grandchildren children there. And James' wife. And Abby said, you know, there's water running down both sides of your house. We said, what are you talking about? It's had been a beautiful day. And then that storm came in like seven light minutes. So we looked and sure enough, she was right. There's water coming down. So we go outside and the water was just flowing over at the top of Holly Drive. And there's nothing we could do about it. We just watched as it chewed slowly but surely chewed into my garden's leach field. It totally destroyed our leach field. The water, the drop from the driveway down to where it gouged down was like a ten-foot drop. And it just.
All in thirty minutes?
Oh, yes, yes. And we had wonderful neighbors. We had like a half a dozen or ten neighbors in there trying to pull debris out of the culvert that had clogged up. And even after that had been pulled out and water was going through the culvert, there's still so much water that was coming through the culvert and still coming across the stream, still gouging out our leach field. And contrary to a rumor that was said at one point in time, none of this went into the lake. There, there's no septic sewage or anything. When it's the latest result, it is the subject tanks, the cells were fine. It was the leach field that got destroyed. So anyway, so all of this happened. And it was frightening. It was just devastating and fragrant. It was, watch this, watch your property being destroyed. And I, I would certainly love to see the town work with us and work. and work out a system to prevent this happening again. As we know, storms are getting worse, so they're not, they're not gonna get lighter, they're only gonna get worse. And Jane and I now, every time it rains, we're scared. You know, because five days later, the same thing happened. And this time, the culvert was not clogged. And brown, filthy water was shooting right through it, the diameter of the, the culvert itself. And still, what it was coming over the top of the road and still banging up our property some more. So, um, this has created like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of damage. And I don't know how many people here have worked with flood insurance people or are getting homeowners insurance. And it is awful, absolutely awful. How long is it to cover any? Zero. They say we do not cover flood damage, so progressives are not giving a cent. Allstate Flood Insurance Company has given us some money, but they're fighting us tooth, tooth and nail on everything we're submitting, everything we're talking about. And can you believe that they don't cover the septic system? Flood insurance doesn't cover your septic system. That's insane. But, anyway, sorry to carry on and on, but this has been a horrible thing for, for Jane and I. Um, we can't live in our house because we don't have a, a septic system that works. Thank God for wonderful neighbors who will let us stay in the summer there. Great, and I thank God for us all for that. Otherwise, we'd be paying a hundred and fifty dollars a night to live somewhere. And guess what? Either insurance company would cover that.
And be on the lake?
Yeah. But, so, that was what happened to us with the lake. But the stuff that went into the lake is incredible, absolutely amazing how much stuff. I mean, there were stumps and branches and bricks and benches. Um, you know, they were outside my shed, just washed out into the lake. And it was deep, the silt, the depth of it was incredibly deep. It was.
Beach.
At a beach, beach guard, but.
Contoured, yeah.
Couldn't get it out for a couple of days. Um, but I guess, you know, something needs to be done. That's why we as association hired a civil engineer to work into it, come up with some ideas. I know it's somebody who has worked with the town quite a few, so that's a good thing. And he wants to work with us. He doesn't want us fighting or doing anything, you know, against each other. He wants to work with all of us. But, why in the world, um, all of this water is being diverted down to the holding pond and down to the stream that bisects my property, just baffles me. And another thing that baffles me is, why in the world, this is what we've been coming into the lake? Why wasn't it diverted such a way that it was going below the dam and not even into a lake? And, uh, the town didn't, all that. Why didn't anyone take that action? I don't know if it can be redone, but, anyway.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the time.
Yes, thank you.
I had a hundred dollar bet that I would draw, but I have to say something.
I did give a hundred dollars to the thing, huh?
I would have taken that bet. Uh, Free Hugo from Holly Drive. Um, I, I think, you know, we've done so much. Every year, we have, we have our meetings, like all the other private roads and associations and, and we address the ten culverts and what we could do to make our road better and we do all of that. And we even went so far as to hire a civil, civil engineer to help us figure out this problem. But, we can only go up two hundred yards. We don't have to go, we, I can't go on somebody else's property and tell them they're wrong. You know, we got, we, we have, um, Boys Camp and we have, um, Oak Hill. And, and what's being done to, we, we, we have the Band-Aid at the bottom of, of the lake that we're dealing with everybody else. And I guess all what, the, the long and short of it is, without asking you to come up with, you know, a million dollars today, tomorrow, or even the next day. And I commend you, DBW, for how quick they came on that, uh, July ninth, whatever it was. I mean, they were on Ivy Road. Uh, uh, when I got up at six, I was, they were already there.
They were there at eleven something when I was on the phone with the chief of.
They did a phenomenal job of, of trying to help get things as quickly as normal as possible. But, but, we need your help above us. We can't do it alone. We don't have the wherewithal to do it. So, I guess all we're doing is asking to, to help us figure out the problem and let's, let's address the problem. Because we all talk about, you know, the fireworks, we all talk about the fast boats and, and we're talking about erosion of, of, of the, the shorefront. But, what about, look, look at Boys Camp and look at Down By Edge, look at the silt that's coming in. Why aren't we addressing that? That's probably, we have the cryo, this is the first time I've been here fifteen years or sixteen years, the first time we've ever had the cryo in, in Crystal Lake that I know of. And, and I'm sure Glenn and Shirley can tell us that. But I don't ever remember, we never were told we couldn't go swimming. Well, now, we, we've been told we can't go swimming a number of times. Excuse me?
Again.
Again today. And you know where that is? That's closest to the dam, where, where, where a lot of that water is coming in. And one last thing I will say is God bless Henry Cross.
Yeah.
Because Henry Cross, um, was a very bright man and he tried very hard to do what was right. And we all, we all felt at that time that changing that water from going down the, if you're going down the hill on, on, uh, uh, Lock Haven, the water was always going on the opposite side of, of us on Holly Drive. It was going down and then into the river. All of a sudden, somebody had this great idea to bring the water across Lock Haven into Holly Drive. And, and Henry, Henry has a letter, and I wish we could find it, saying that it was not his fault, it, it, it was a great letter, I wish I could find it. You do not. But he was promised by the, by the select people that, that things would be done. And I don't know if they have or haven't, but something has to be looked at for the ways to, what comes down Lock Haven and also from Oak Hill, Boys Camp, and us. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, um, Buck's Whirlwind, Star Drive, we have very, very similar problems. All that water comes down, all the way down, and because of where our development is, thirty-three homes, it just all comes down on the upper side of Boys Camp, hits the culverts and comes roaring down through our place, tearing up, you know, ground, everything. And one of the things that, if you've gone past and you've noticed there's a couple beaches.
Yeah.
We have one of those beaches, there was so much sand coming down there from, from Boys Camp, it was incredible. And then Boys Camp itself had a beach, I mean, just tore the road all the way up. Now, I talked to Henry when they were putting in this thing and he and I both laughed at how stupid the design was, just incredibly dumb it was to have all that stuff. I mean, I don't know how much the, the level down by the dam is raised, but I, I, I would be amazed if it wasn't immense. I mean, that water should have gone across the road and it should have gone into Mud Pond, that's the way it should have gone. Unfortunately, that's not it. Now, the, the bigger problem for the town is, we have the same problems. I mean, we put, we put maybe six, seven thousand dollars a year. We put, uh, ten years ago, we had to put a culvert on Boulder because the water just ripped the old culvert out, so we had to spend, yeah, you know, I don't know, it was maybe, it was between seven and ten thousand dollars. That was that, that's a lot of money. So, I, I think it's an overall problem that you have with everybody up there from Boys Camp all the ways down, all the properties on the downside of that hill get the crap kicked out of them all the time. And the other thing is, I'll tell you, Boys Camp, they try really hard to keep it smooth, but once it rains, you get, it's like tank traps going across there, pot holes everywhere. You know, you steer in your car, you're around, you know, you're around the pot holes, it's a fun driving rate. So, I, I think this is a larger problem and, you know, they're private roads. I don't know what, what we can get the town to do or whatever, but, you know, it's a big number. It just doesn't affect Holly, it affects, you know, Star and even Boys Camp and, and, um, Butman and Colby, Colby gets washed out every rainstorm, every rainstorm. I get in my tractor, Brian Sterns will roll behind me, we have to drag the roads up. It, it's crazy, I mean, it's really crazy. And most of that water, most of the water in our place comes down off the hill to Boys Camp and then rolls across Boys Camp. It's, it's really pretty bad. So, I sympathize with you, but it's a big problem. So, whatever they do for you, they gotta do for the whole thing, so.
The problem is, Crystal Lake is, Crystal Lake is the one that's getting, suffering. The whole lake is suffering.
Well, look at the taxes we pay.
Look at the taxes we pay.
Yeah, I mean.
And what happens if there's no lake? There'll be no taxes.
Let's not get so excited. Go ahead, Lee.
Hi, Lee Davis, I live on Lock Haven Road. I have two, two points I want to make. Number one, some of the new houses, um, that are being built up on Lock Haven Road, um, there was one that lost all their fill, all their sand. I don't understand why there weren't some kind of prevented fences to keep the fill from going down. Maybe they didn't realize what was gonna happen. So, all that fill went down into the lake or through the culverts and clogged them up. The other thing, I'm talking as a conservationist. People's property, it's very sad to hear what's happening. The loss, the money, loss of being displaced. The most important thing is the lake. All wetlands, all bogs at one time were lakes. As time went on, they filled in. The nutrients that were left there from the glaciers that made the, that made the recesses. And so what's, it could happen to Crystal Lake, if it continues to get the nutrients, the sand, the fertilizer from people's lawns, it can happen there. Judge On used to be open, I remember being out there, there were, there, there wasn't all the, the wonderful vegetation that's there now. But that happens over time. So, if you don't do something about it, Crystal Lake will be lost. It'll be Crystal Pond. That's all I want to say.
That Shirley?
Shirley, great. That is a natural process that the lakes are going to, to fill in. But, we can, with good, good lake stewardship, slow that process down and to try to keep the sediment, as much sediment as possible, from going into the lake. And because the more sediment that goes in, the more clay growth there is and the more you lay just ability. And it's our responsibility to try to slow the process down.
I just want to quickly interject that the two ladies who just spoke are both on Conservation Commission and there is an open seat. See, we're going this, but in, in reality, right, this is something that's very important that we have a, just.
Come see us Thursday.
Yeah, come see us Thursday too. Um, but, you know, I, I'm hearing what you're saying and I just want you to know that if you have a strong interest in conservation this piece, there is a seat open. So, we're gonna go back to our regular scheduled program, go ahead.
Uh, Martin Gibson. Um, again.
That's okay.
You asked what the town could do in the short term and Brad mentioned, uh, the settlement pond, the silt pond. Every time it rains, I go out and videotape what's coming into the pond, what's going down the ditch, what goes into the lake, even the short storm that lasts fifty or twenty minutes. That ditch is full and the first culvert on Holly Drive that borders across property is brown, full brown. So, I think in the short term, what, what I would like to see happen, I can't speak for everyone here in Holly Drive, is a rebuilding of that settlement pond, even though long-term we may need to make it bigger, do something else. It's totally ineffective right now. It's just blowing directly into the lake, nothing. There's no settlement to it, it just runs right straight through. So, short term wise, you asked what we could do, I said increased ditching, but I think based on what we've discussed and the evidence that I have with pictures and video, need to do something with that silt pond, uh, the sooner the better, to protect the lake if nothing else. It has washed out Holly Drive twice, is washing out some of the property on the other side of the culvert, on the cross property that we have to deal with. Um, that's something I think that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Okay, the silence and then we'll come back, okay? Go ahead.
Uh, two things. Conservation Committee, I'd love to join.
Well, it's your form.
Um, and, and the second thing is, what you said is absolutely true about invasive plants. When we bought our house twenty-one years ago, there was a little patch of patsails that Jan Sample and Tim Sample and Jane and I shared, it was much bigger than this room.
No, it was bigger than ten.
Yeah, and we had a beach, we had a sandy beach there. Now, there is a huge, huge patsail, um,
Weeding World.
Community, I don't know what you call it, you're old, forest that is encroaching on our dock where our honeymoon boat is. And I guess, it's an invasive plant, right? It's an invasive species. And I would like to be able to go to DES and get a dredge and a permit, you know, so. I, I understand.
They might have gotten us into some of this, I'm just saying.
I also.
And it is, I do not believe it's an invasive species and it's weak.
It is, it is mapped as non-invasive. From all of the species in Lake, on map by DES, that is not listed as an invasive species. It ain't very sightseeing and it ain't very comfortable. Okay, various, various, it's not an invasive species. The invasive species is you and I. We're the ones that are dumping the stuff in the lake to create, even grow.
We are not dumping.
We're not dumping anything.
If we could keep this on the topic, folks.
Definitely. Anyway, I just wanted to clear your point that this vegetation has upped and toppled, if you can still word it. It's not, it's not, it's like eight times the size where it was.
Can I help you? What caused the, the culvert? I mean, what clogged it up? Is this, is it the fill, the sand, it's such, somebody have to.
Depends on which culvert.
Graches and stumps and rocks.
I think, I had Glenn, you were, Glenn was next and then we'll go to you. Go by one.
We had a paper back, uh, with Jan, one of ours last year, paper back shop.
I'm gabbling you for trotting. Go ahead, Glenn.
Okay, I'm going green, Shirley's. Oh, yeah. That's not a unique problem to the Holly Drive area of Crystal Lake. We do have a very steep hill behind those places and a lot of water comes down awful fast. But I can show you pictures that we've taken outside our house and we're probably one of the flattest areas on the lake where all the sediment is running into the lake, off of the roadway, from the hill behind us, all that. The town came in some years ago, they cleaned it all out, put in hay bales. I don't know what happened to the hay bales, but they haven't done anything since. I'm not criticizing the town, those guys have a lot of work to do. But this is not unique to Holly Drive. We're at the bottom of the hills all the way around and all that water comes down. Now, on the Holly Drive side, it is steep, there's a lot of water comes down there and it comes down there from all those other roads because it's been directed to do so. It's simple that, but there is a problem everywhere on Lake Waterbound.
Go ahead. I'm Jan Sample, I live on Holly Drive too. And, uh, I have a culvert in my yard and it's probably at least this big, two, two feet maybe? Two, two. And the water coming down, it didn't come over the brook, just barely didn't come over. But it came out full force, the whole tube. I now have almost a little swimming pond right at the face of the culvert and it went right down into the lake and it's been doing this for years, not that bad. But I now, between the ridges and my house, you can't get, you have to float. There's this grass stuff that's growing up and laying, and laying across the top of the water and the muck is so deep that you can't, can't put your feet down. You'll be up to your knees. If you want to walk there, you gotta wait till it freezes, till they lower the lake completely and it freezes. It's just, and it never was like that, I've been there since ninety-six.
So, I think, um, I don't want to cut everyone short, but I just want to be mindful of the time and everyone else's time. Uh, it sounds, it sounds like this needs to me to go back to operations and we'll work with our team. Um, but we also have a fun. Um, but we also have the fun folks at D E S, and if you've ever tried to work with them and get an answer, that's not a fast project. I'm trying to deal with a beaver pond of my property. Um, so, and they often dictate, so they own the water, right? And so they get to make a lot of decisions, we don't, but I think you guys have, so just so you got, everyone here knows, they've hired Pathways. We also use Pathways, so I think we've got that connection. Um, and I think unless anybody objects, I think we should agree to cooperate and have them work, Pathways work with Ed. And see what we can come up with. We obviously have other issues around town that are similar. So I think there are also pieces we can be learning about what we can do across town because we've got Massey Valley, we've got Spectacle Pond. So this is a very important issue, go ahead.
Yeah, Regan, uh, I agree with everything that Glenn said, that there are issues around Crystal Lake, entire lake. However, I see Holly Drive as being an acute issue. We've got an emergency here. Um, I don't think we have time to wait for the watershed project to be completed. We've got to do something now. What we'd like to do is work with the town to go to D, D, uh, D E S, to go to New Hampshire Lakes, whoever it takes, to review this issue comprehensively, where it began, where it is now, to what the future holds, and come up with a solution.
I don't think, is anyone in opposition to, I think Ed will do that work for us. And, um, and we rely, obviously, you know, we sit here and we listen to and redirect policy in this town and oversee the budget. By the end of the day, operations goes through Ed and his team, and so we rely very heavily on them. If for some reason it was not getting done, I'd be very worried, but I think we are going to have to work on this because it affects a lot of people. Go ahead, Sid.
Is there money from the storms, from the money?
Yeah, we're getting some money back right now, and we can redirect that in next year's budget. We don't have any money this year that we can legally spend. But we can reallocate that through the budgeting process.
From these storms, from these rain storms, they didn't.
It will in a year or two. And that's how it usually works.
That was what, when he was explaining, we'll go into the general fund as part of the budget process. He's making that proactive recommendation that we allocate the thirty thousand or ish.
Yeah, I was looking at thirty thousand a year right now to get started. We'll see what comes out, if we need more money than that. We just got about a sixty thousand dollar payment from FEMA, but I think it was from a storm from about three years ago.
Well, they're quick, huh?
Okay.
Six thousand.
We take a lot of.
John Hall with Chrisy Holly Drive, there hasn't been no FEMA's termination until July.
Not about this storm, yeah.
But we did, I will tell you, uh, I was, I talked to our emergency manager that night as the rain was coming down, and I was out in it because my farm went under. Um, and so I understand, I immediately called Roy and Chief Holland and had a conversation. And his, the teams were out actively taking pictures, getting the GPS coordinates to do it. So I want you to know that our team has made those preliminary pieces, right? Because the first thing FEMA does is like, oh, not documented, right? So we are doing the due diligence things and the, and the pieces of the paperwork to, to push this forward. And we know how frustrating it is, right?
And it's also not town by town.
I asked the governor for an emergency declaration. I texted our executive counselor at eleven at night. Um, and she was lovely and got right back to me, but we were not able to get the governor to give her an emergency declaration for this area.
Yeah.
And it's a federal or state, can you tell? FEMA's, FEMA's based on a, a regional devastation, not just the town. So they have to look at the towns around us and look at all the damage. So, uh, another thing Roy did do was he called the towns around and was trying to help them make sure that they were documenting right and turning stuff in, so.
Roy did that, and I did it too. We're trying very hard. You guys can always call or write to your executive counselor, right? Just because we represent, doesn't mean every one of you can't write to them and tell them to report. Go ahead.
So, Sue Gibson, Crystal Lake Road, Holly Drive. Um, you mentioned you work with Pathways also, so are you going to take it upon yourselves to pay or help compensate us for the money that we are expecting to expend now, um, for the civil engineer work, or are you going to just?
We can't make a large expenditure for, without going to town meeting, right? So things that aren't within a budget, as, as nice as that would be, things like that go before the voters. So Ed is going to be working to determine what components we own, um, and what we're able to do. I, and I know it's very extensive and it's super frustrating, like I don't have central heat from a flood over a year ago. Um, and so I really do feel for you guys, that it's something that he's gonna have to work with Pathways on components that we own, and there's gonna have to be some kind of vehicle. So we can't make you a financial promise.
So, uh, you want us to proceed because if our feeling is mostly coming from up above. So we're paying all this money to find out that it's coming from up above. That's not really fair to us homeowners, where we're already spending a lot of money as, um, for private ride.
I mean, it's coming from above, it's all coming from above.
All of your neighbors above you, and that's a very hard question, right?
Yeah, it's ruined a lot of property along the way, so. But, I mean, it's eroding ours again, so.
Carol Brown said, you're deeply driving, right, to the river. It is coming from all, up, up above, but it's also coming from bad design. So thank you to the Jack from Star Drive who mentioned that. Because there's no logical reason why all the water from the left-hand side and following of Lock Haven should have ever been directed underneath roads to the right side into your retention pond and onto our private road and through our private culverts to dump silt into Crystal Lake. It's, it wasn't a smart decision. So there is something that humans read as an organization, as a community, can do to fix that. But it means going through the process, and hiring an engineer at each and time, that this is a virgin project.
Yeah, and this, so this design did not come from the town, right? We did not.
It was the state and the town.
Right, yeah.
The town actually diverted, the town diverted.
Right, but we.
The water then the state, but the still.
In New Hampshire, it is not legal to divert water onto someone else's property. You can't go changing the flow. D E S makes those decisions, and so you don't just get to change where the water goes, right? And that's, that's how it reads. I'm not saying that's how it works in practice, but I'm saying, so we have to work with D E S. Um, and it is, it is not an overnight project to get D E S to make a design, nor is, if you've ever seen us argue over intersections here. Um, very easy to get the state to agree on engineering. Uh, this is, how long has our crosswalk been an engineering? The crosswalk across La Nueva School, it's just a machine. So, but we will make a commitment to working on it, yes.
And I would like to remind people that we also have to work with the general citizenry of Enfield and all the taxpayers, right? So keep in mind that you're asking for significant input, significant work on a private road.
No, we're not asking.
Or, or did I misunderstand you?
Yes, I think you do.
Okay, explain.
I'm Jane Ricky, and we are asking for you to fix the problem that the town has created. Not, we are not asking you to fix our road, we're not asking you to fix our property, we're not asking you to build a new culvert next to our house. We're asking you to fix the problem, the, the source of the problem that's causing our problem at the end. We're not asking you to do it just for us. This is for the lake. This is not for us, it's for the lake and for the future of this town.
And it's not just Holly Drive, it's everybody on the side of the lake, and it's everybody on the other side too. It's for the lake.
Okay, I'm gonna, because we kind of got into internal dialogue, I'd like to re-acknowledge you.
Pete Hugo's in. I just want to tell you that, uh, if you know Voice Camp, where the, uh, the big red boathouse is, I was going past there a couple days after the storm, and I'm very good friends. Pete Motion is one of my best friends. Uh, Audrey, the daughter, was out there and we're talking, and she was walking on her, what was a beach. Her, she sunk down to her knees from the amount of dirt and sand that came from that one storm. She walked right along by her bulkhead and went down to her knee in silk.
I think, like, that's not a question we're gonna resolve tonight, right? Like, we do hear you, I don't think anyone doesn't think this isn't a serious problem, but I want to hand it back to the people who can do the work, who can work with the engineers to get some immediate action on things that we can fix in the short term, do some medium-term items, and then look at the long-term future, because it really is a, a three-prong approach, right? We also, I think, from the conservation side, need to be talking to people about what they can do to keep the silt from going into the stream in the first place, right? Because every property owner in this town can help all of you, anyone who's uphill from here. So I think there's some education piece that we can do, and we'll be addressing that on Thursday night in Conservation. Um, we have an online person? Yep, go ahead, Gretchen.
This is Gretchen. I just wanted to say, I'm the president of the Holly Drive Road Association, but I couldn't be there in person. But everybody's been doing such a great job, so thank you, everyone, for speaking up. I guess I just wanted to say, I know there's a problem around the whole lake. I just want to say what Dan had just said and everyone else's, Carol's saying is, it's more of an emergent issue on Holly Drive because that pond is going into the road there. And if that culvert goes, then we can't even get past that first culvert to get to the homes past it. And that happened in about two thousand and eight, and we all had to park at the first Susan Cross's house, uh, Sue Gibson now. And just, we don't want to run into that problem. So I think besides the, the pond maybe getting built a little bigger and deeper, we also need to maybe think of that culvert on Lock Haven going back, like Carol had said, back to the other side of Lock Haven, and maybe going down beyond the pond into Mud Ha, Mud Road, and not going into Holly Drive. Because if that culvert goes, it's gonna be a much bigger issue, and that is kind of emergent. Because as I said, right now, we have poor Ed and Jane who are not living in their home because of this emergent issue. And so that is why we've come to you. It's not, you know, something that we're thinking years down the road. We really need help with, so that culvert doesn't blow. And if you drive down the road, you'll see that it's going into the road, and we've already fixed the road once, and now we're gonna have to fix it again because it's gonna cut us off, and all that, those rocks are going into that culvert there. So I just wanted to say that, but thank you as well for having us on your agenda and for helping us with this issue.
And this isn't a one-time conversation, right? So you guys know how to contact Ed to communicate with him, um, and I want to make sure that that line of communication remains open. I think Pathways is gonna be able to tell you a lot about the pieces of your individual properties and what you can do and what we can do. Um, and then we can wrestle state. Because that's what's gonna have to happen at some point. Um, and I think our team is willing to do the work we can because we recognize, I don't think anyone's denying it's a problem, it's just getting through the process. So let Ed do it. I want to cut this conversation short unless you have something really nice.
I just got a, a question.
Yep.
Will you be able to follow all the streams that go up on the lake through everybody's property?
I am personally not going to, that's what the engineer is going to do. I love you guys, but you probably aren't all giving me scripts. That is why we, that is gonna be a question for engineering and also.
I think that would be a help, because I think that, you know, a lot of them can alter them in ways and protect what goes down so fast. Yeah, they slow it up. And I think they ought to be checked. Really.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for bringing, you know, it's a very important conversation, we'll keep at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll issue the same thing. You're welcome to say, I'm not gonna do a recess this time because we still have the entire agenda to do. Y'all are staying with me.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I want to go back to the top of the agenda, um, under approval of the minutes. You have minutes, both regular and non-public, from August twenty-first in the packet. What is the pleasure of your work?
I move we accept both the public and non-public minutes as presented.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, questions, comments? On motion, yes.
They're well-taken.
Okay. Great, um, see, no further discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, so I page what I'm going to say. On to, I'd like to move on to board reports, let's go around the table. Eric?
Uh, very briefly, the, the board had a couple of plotline adjustments and all this started the sound plan review for.
We need you to be relatively quiet so that the minute taker can hear the conversation. Thank you.
And Phil's Association did not meet in August. The Energy Commission is continuing to plan for our preservation forum in January or February, and you have other organizations to partner with.
Uh, the Budget Committee had its first meeting, generally an organizational meeting. Uh, Dimitri was re-elected as, as president, and Shirley was elected as vice chairman. Um, there was a discussion about metrics, um, about what kind of metrics we want to be looking at. Uh, Dimitri's feeling is presently, the only metric we really look at is the, uh, the debt, the undesignated fund. Uh, and he's gonna try to push us to look at some other metrics as we move forward. And then we ended with a very long and, and vigorous discussion about, um, retention of employees and salaries. And really a recognition, I think, on the Budget Committee that this has to be a priority. That it is so expensive to replace employees that we are probably gonna be better off to continue to be somewhat aggressive in awarding raises.
Thank you. Greatly.
Um, the Energy Committee didn't have any major issues. Uh, they reaffirmed what they'd like to submit for their budget for the next year, which is the same as last year, uh, so that they can do some communication to the public. They also decided that they wanted to do a little bulb replacement throughout a couple of the buildings, but, uh, no major issues from Energy.
Great, uh, Conservation Commission has found out, due to timing of some of the members, and so met about two weeks ago. Major discussion really has been around the new trail master role and what is gonna be done, and so considerable time has been dedicated to that. Also, uh, discussion about how to get out in front of folks. Uh, and so we at Davis, as you heard, will be at the farmer's market this Saturday from nine, uh, ten to one. So this coming Saturday, ten to one, you can stop by and see what the Conservation Commission is up to. They're gonna tell you a little bit about their upcoming projects, and you can sign up to help on trails. Uh, there also was a considerable portion of our conversation dedicated to education modules that are being developed. And, um, a bit centered around learning how to read some of the delightful pieces that come down from the state. Um, so a lot of focus on just understanding how to read and what needs signature and what doesn't. The next meeting is Thursday, and we're gonna have a presentation from Patty Freed, who happens to also be the master gardener, who is overseeing a lot of the lakeside park work in terms of the plantings and invasive species. She's been integral in talking to people about invasive species as we do that project. And so she's gonna talk to Conservation about both invasive species, uh, and a little bit about what she knows about rain gardens to work on the stormwater issue, so pretty important and proactive work we're, I guess it's not proactive anymore, but we're trying.
Is there gonna be a virtual option for that?
Yes, if I can figure out how to run it, I was, it's been working, and I think Whitney is back, and there was a virtual option, and it managed to save, so. But no one joined us last time, so you can totally hang with us. We'd love it. I want to go on to Town Manager's Report unless anyone has questions for each other.
Make it as quick as possible. Um, staff report, nothing's really changed. We're still looking for police officers, everything else is filled with. Um, public safety building, Whitney Hall projects, um, we've been working with Red Loaf to develop a new floor plan based around keeping the elevator shaft, elevator, mechanical room, and staircase. Those are three really expensive parts of the building. So in an effort to keep the budget within budget, um, we've redesigned the floor plan to, to keep those pieces in place. That does not mean we're not gonna be replacing, um, parts of the elevator and making it better. We have talked with Stanley Elevator, and they said they have full refurbishing kits, including new motors and everything that would make that like a new one and save us quite. including new motors and everything that would make that like a new one and save us quite a bit of money. So we're, we're looking at that. I think we have a good floor plan that we're moving forward. I did get preliminary draft plans of them today that I have not reviewed yet, but I'll be reviewing them. And once we get something fairly solid on paper, I'll share that with the board so you guys can see what we're, what we're looking at. We did go through the impact, talking about the new floor plans in there. Overall, there was good consensus that we're headed in the right direction. So we'll continue looking at that. I've been working with the Shaker Museum a little bit on, on pricing and moving forward with leasing to Los Allolet property once that transfer takes place and we'll be hopefully formalizing that in the next couple of months. But everything's moving forward and looking good in that area and we plan to, to move into Los Allolet when the time comes.
Not interrupt, but on that point, do you think it's possible that we can do some sort of fund which can light the Christmas lights without it being an expense to the town?
Yeah, and I don't think we'll be in there by Christmas.
Okay.
We, we may be transferring the bills into our name, but I'll work with them to make sure that it gets paid properly.
Do we think they're leaving the Christmas lights behind?
They are.
Yeah. It's definite.
There's been volunteers talking about making sure that it happens. I don't know if it'll happen robustly.
They don't want, because they're all incandescent.
Cool. We'll continue to work with that and we'll make sure that there's a, a fair compromise.
If there's a way to fund it, I know that there's a lot of public support for that as the Los Allolet fathers have stepped away this month.
We don't plan on paying that as the town.
Yeah, why? No, but I know that there's plenty of support for it coordinated between the town as we head into a potentially.
I don't think museum.
And the museum.
Yeah, my gut feeling, well, I won't go there.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think there's a lot of moving parts to it, but it is, no, it's a substantial investment. And if we've taken over the lease and changed any of the utilities for that interim period, we're leasing into our name. Obviously, we can't be tied to that bill. As much as it's really, really cool, that's a bigger bill than the taxpayers have authorized us to cost out for electricity. So no, and we're probably not getting a special meeting, but the Supreme Board for it. Okay, back on to your.
So with that, also the public safety building's been moving forward. I am adding something to the agenda tonight. I sent it out today for moving that project forward. We'll talk about that a little bit more when we get there. Strategic planning continues to move forward. Staff met a couple of weeks ago and did a strategic planning session on technology and efficiencies and infrastructure and facility section. So they got you to the same point that you guys got in your retreat with some strategic objectives. And I will be working with staff really soon to, to start to backfill some of those strategic objectives with actual measurable goals and things we can do moving forward. So we continue to work on that project in the background and hopefully we'll have that done later this year to present back to you. The Foray Trail Project continues to have stims and flows and moves forward. We're back to a slower timeline for the federal government. So it may mean not completing the whole project, but I did ask that we push forward and get as much of it done in the timeframe that we can get done. It'll move us forward. They have given me approval to move, I did an RFP, RFQ, excuse me, for engineering firms. We had two firms submit. I've worked with the state and they've given me permission to move forward with negotiations on one of those firms. Once we come to a, a scope and fee agreement, we'll get approval from the state and I'll be back to the select board for approval to award that project. So we'll be moving on that. A little bit of, just to let you guys know, it's been happening in the town office where, I'm going to call it, we're moving towards digitalizing more. But we've, we've moved our finance software from a server-based program to a cloud-based program. We have some issues with that. We're working through right now. As with any software change, it doesn't work flawlessly when you first move over, but we're continuing to move through that. It's making it a little bit easier. Liz in the, in the office has started scanning invoices and those things to make sure that everything's digitized. And we're less reliant on papers, vinyl cabinets and a little bit more have everything in one place. It'll make things more efficient to find, people can research those invoices and things faster. So we're also looking into moving Avatar assessing program and possibly iWorks to the cloud. Once we get rid of those two, I think we'll be free from the server in the downtown office. So we're, we're lurking and we're working aggressively on that, thinking it'll help as we're moving back and forth in temporary places if we're not connected to the server to do that. So we'll be, we'll be trying to get that done this year and budgeting for that in the, in the near future. And then I'm also looking and working with our GIS company to get our staff some more resources so we can upload directly to our G, GIS. It'll make some property record stuff go a little faster, but then it'll also allow us to upload building permits, septic permits, all those things straight to the parcel. So it'd be easier for the residents to search those and not necessarily have to come into the office to find the file to look at a septic permit. They can look it up online at home. So those are things we're working on. The office continue to, to move forward. Quick tax deed update. All the properties that you authorized us taking the tax deed have been paid. So we're not taking any properties. They all got paid up, so we're pretty happy about that.
That's the way it should work.
Yeah, it's good. Too bad we have to threaten to take it until they pay it, but they all got paid. A couple of them got sold and paid and it was good. We contacted First Life and they paid their bill. Right before I left the office, I saw the email today that Voice Camp Road will be closed on September eleventh from seven o'clock to three o'clock for culvert replacement. We want you to know that DPW checked the school bus route, so they're trying to avoid making sure that buses can get through when they need to get through. But they're going to close from seven o'clock to three o'clock to replace a culvert on Voice Bank Road. Couple more quick things with DPW. The Maple Street Water Project, the punchless items are being worked on this week. They include walkways, laundry seating, some roadwork in the Canaan area via culvert and a couple of other things. So we're, we're really winding down that project with some, some final punch list items. The RRFP that we were talking about, Pathways Consulting has submitted the additional information that DOT wanted. So we're, we're in a waiting game, waiting for them to get back to us now. And then the FEMA Christmas Storm, we have completed the assistance application and it's been submitted for damage on Potato Road and excessive ice and drainage work on Shaker Hill Road. So we'll continue to push on that and hopefully we get some more FEMA money back. And then last but not least, our invasive species project, we're continuing to try to move that forward. But I did get word today, I had applied and we have been approved to, I guess, teach a class or present a class at the NHMA conference this year on the work that the town of Enfield's doing and New Boys and King and how we're planning on going about making a stab and getting rid of some of our invasive species and trying to control it. So we'll be talking with some other people in town, Patty, about possibly joining us and helping talk about that effort and what, what other towns can do and how they can team up to, to help tackle this problem.
So how's the Japanese knotweed situation been in terms of the roadside mowing? They managed to avoid that or?
They knocked it, they knocked it, but instead of mowing it and running it through the mower, I saw them knocking it back. So it's not, you're still flattening it and doing some damage, but you're not dragging it.
We're doing some different things and we are working with them. We plan to do it this year and then our consultant left New Boys and King, but we have a new one back and we're going to be doing some DPW classes, not only for Enfield, but for surrounding communities as well.
That'd be great.
To talk about how to, how to deal with Japanese knotweed and other invasive.
We keep harvesting it.
And then we're also working, we've been passing a document back and forth, but we're working up a scope of work to bring on a, a contractor to do chemical application and help us create a plan to, to deal with some of the, the plants. So we're, we're moving into that action step. It's going a little slower than we'd hoped, but it is moving forward.
Thank you.
A question, not related to that, but not far off. What are they doing on Shaker Hill? What is the cause that they're chasing? The giant raping on the roadway?
You mean the state?
Ditching? Yeah, I know the state is. Yeah, what is that? What are they building?
They're not building. They're doing ditching that they should have done years ago. Yeah.
They're way behind us.
Way beyond conventional ditching practices. It's fairly substantial.
Yeah, they're just.
They aren't even doing a ditch.
Are they going to clean it up or is that left to the homeowner to clean up those ditches?
No, that's, that's in the right of way and they're scraping it to get the water off the.
And the loose fill that they're leaving behind, that's left to the homeowner to resolve.
It'll stay there. Yeah.
Messy, messy job. Not at all professional, in my opinion, by the state.
But if people have trouble or they have a concern about their property, they should call district to themselves and they should email.
Agreed, but it is a reflection on the town as you go through that main road that it just looks very unprofessional and left very haphazardly.
They were supposed to do a major project on Shaker Hill. I don't know how long they've been telling us, since when Ryan was here. They were supposed to be cleaning up a lot of those. I have not seen them do the project. I have not seen them do the culverts. And I don't think we can really make them. It's a conversation we're going to have to have about how this goes down with them. Because it, it is, I agree with you and it's very frustrating when they dig up everyone's property that people really have tried to keep nice.
But we've been complaining about the, the lack of good culverts on that road for a while.
And the lack of.
No question. We just sort of take what we get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bad culvert being, a bad culvert being better than none. And, and the haphazard work being left. Needs to be accepted.
Let's get that done.
Another time. Okay. All right, so you have more on your report, I'm assuming.
That's my report.
Okay, so we've got questions out of the way, I'm assuming. So I want to add, go on to the one that was inserted in tonight, which is the award, the public safety building, MEP RFP, which is mechanical, electrical and plumbing.